Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council regular meeting for Monday, September 11th, 2023. Before we get started, I want to acknowledge that today is a day of reflection, sorrow, and remembrance on September 11th. I have asked my council to share in our remarks, starting with Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. The September 11th attacks 22 years ago today in New York City changed the way we live, the way we travel, and it changed the lives and families of thousands of people who were directly impacted. Councilmember Lee?
September 11th is also a reminder of great patriotism of our nation. As we witness, many heroes emerge on that day and in the months beyond, which brought a great coalescing of people with common values and shared heartache, with the collective mission of showing up for each other as a community to rebuild lives and heal together. Thank you.
We in city government deeply understand and connect to the value of community. It is why we do what we do every day.
I especially want to recognize, pardon me, I especially want to recognize and send thoughts to our first responders today, who are often the closest to our community when it is in need and who are uniquely impacted by this day, knowing it represents the great sacrifice that can come from their profession.
I am proud of our city for the way we live our values every day and demonstrate what a caring, resilient community we are here in Bellevue.
This is an important element of our national identity that continues to hold on to the lessons and reflections from September 11th, 2001.
And with that, I'd like to recognize a moment of silence for those lost and those impacted on this day. If we could please be silent for a moment here. Okay, I've got some good news. Our very own police officer, Officer Beretta, who was seriously injured on August 15th, his motorcycle, and he fell off of an I-5 overpass while he was on motorcycle escort for Vice President Kamala Harris. And he fell almost 60 feet from that overpass, and miraculously, he survived. He underwent multiple surgeries for injuries to his back, his legs, and shoulder, and he will require months of therapy. But he was released from the hospital on Friday, and many of, we can clap for that.[193.34][193.34](APPLAUSE). And many of his colleagues, friends, and peers greeted him at the door, and the Bellevue Police escorted his ambulance home. Officer Beretta is 39 years old. He has a wife and three sons under the age of five. The Bellevue Police Foundation is taking donations to help support him and his family, and on behalf of the Bellevue City Council, I want to express our appreciation to all of our first responders who risk their lives every day to protect and serve our community. And I want to especially wish Kevin continued positive progress in his recovery. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
And Councilmember Zahn.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson, could you please lead us in the flag salute? Certainly. Everyone will please rise and join me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have three proclamations tonight, and I think we have a full agenda. So what we're going to do is we'll read each proclamation separately, and then we'll come down and take separate photographs. So the first one is Hunger, Action, and Awareness Month, proclamation read by Councilmember Stokes. And we will hand that proclamation over to Amanda Lopez-Castanon from Hope Link and Philip Peters from Renewal Food, says Feed Bank, but I think it shouldn't be Food Bank? Anyway, sorry. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Stokes.
Okay. Whereas King County, East King County cities, including Bellevue, Issaquah, Kirkland, Redmond, and Sammamish, recognize adequate nutrition as a basic need for each resident; and whereas food insecurity occurs when individuals or households lack reliable access to affordable, nutritious food; and whereas food needs are one of the most common reasons for King County residents to call social service providers; and whereas Hispanic, Black, and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders residents and people with disabilities are disproportionately represented among people seeking food assistance in Bellevue, King County, and many places across the country; and whereas food insecurity and lack of access to healthy foods contribute to various nutrition-related illnesses, and children facing hunger are more likely to experience developmental delay, repeat school years, and experience social and behavioral challenges; and whereas Bellevue desires to build a future with no child goes hungry, and where all residents have access to healthy, affordable, fresh, locally-made, and sustainably-produced food; and whereas we commend food banks, emergency and hot meal programs, and the hundreds of volunteers working with our cities, local faith organizations, and social service agencies to address the rising hunger needs; and whereas we encourage Bellevue community members to donate or volunteer to a local food bank or human services partner agency and help combat local food insecurity and hungry. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2023 as Hunger, Action, and Awareness Month in Bellevue, and strongly urge all residents to join area food banks in sharing what they can to support our neighbors, neighbors who are hungry.
Amanda and Philip, would you like to come up and speak? Can you introduce who else you have brought with you?
Hello. I'm Philip Peters, Executive Director for Renewal Food Bank, joined by my colleague Lee. Demand at renewal is higher than ever. In the last year, we have seen a 40% increase in customers. Serving now over 400 families a week. Wow. The quality of food at renewal is also higher than ever as well, with high-quality meat, produce, milk, deli, and dairy items for all of our families.
We respect the needs of our customers, and we are dedicated to provide food to our community, inclusive of all backgrounds and cultural preferences. Your continued support is essential.
We need our neighbors, from government groups to corporations, from individuals to community groups. Your help feeds families. Help us feed our neighbors. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Amanda Lopez-Castanon, Director of Food Programs at Hope Link, and I'm here with my colleague Jodi Peña.
On behalf of Hope Link, on behalf of Hope Link, we would like to thank the City of Bellevue for your support for our food program. USDA estimates in 2021 showed that the lowest possible cost of nutritious, cost-effective diet prepared at home for a family of four was $835.57 per month. With costs, with food costs continuing to rise since then, we estimate that the individuals in need in Bellevue receive an average of $135 per month by visiting the markets. Hope Link has served 1,122 Bellevue families, which is 2,792 individuals, so far in 2023. Although we have experienced a small glitch in our tracking system, we believe that that number is slightly higher.
Our Bellevue Center, located at the corner of 148th and Main, distributed 1.9 million pounds of food in fiscal year '23, which is an increase over fiscal year '22. With the city's help, we've been able to serve the area's diverse community by providing culturally relevant foods that people need to be able to thrive in place. Again, we'd like to say thank you on Hope Link's behalf for your generous support. Have a great evening, everybody.
Thank you. We'll come down later and do a picture with you, so don't go anywhere.
Yep.
I mean, you can go sit down, but.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next proclamation is East Side Welcoming Week, with Councilmember Zahn will read, and then Haruka Kojima will accept.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the east side cities of Bellevue, Issaquah, Kirkland, Redmond, and Sammamish have jointly celebrated East Side Welcoming Week for the last seven years; and whereas these cities recognize the importance of ensuring that all residents feel safe, secure, and welcome; and whereas East King County is one of the most racially and ethnically diverse regions in Washington State, with over 35% of our residents coming from places outside of the United States, and 38% of residents speaking a language other than English at home; and whereas in our highly mobile region, nearly 1 in 5 residents has lived in their current residence for less than one year; and whereas realizing our vision for a welcoming community requires actively addressing the lived experiences of those in our community who do not feel welcome, safe, valued, or included; and whereas historic and current impacts of individual, institutional, and systemic racism that resulted in harmful disparities in education, employment, income, housing, criminal justice, and quality of life, as well as sense of belonging; and whereas our community, like others across the nation, has structures, systems, and policies that contribute to injustices, racial inequity, and discriminatory treatment against residents who were born in another country, are Black, Indigenous, other people of color, including those who hold intersectional identities of LBGTQIA+, faith-based cultures, people with visible and invisible disabilities, et cetera; and whereas to capitalize on diversity as an asset, our community must thrive to create a culture and environment that ensures everyone can belong and thrive. Now therefore, I, on behalf of the mayors of Bellevue, Issaquah, Kirkland, Redmond, Sammamish, Washington, jointly proclaim September 8th to the 17th, 2023, as East Side Welcoming Week, and invite the community to engage in opportunities during the East Side Welcoming Week and beyond to learn, connect across differences, and take joint action to achieve a welcoming, equitable, and inclusive community. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Haruka Kojima. I'm a vice chair of the BIDAN, which is Bellevue Diversity Association Network. I've been a member of the BIDAN for the last seven years. And part of the Welcoming Week events, BIDAN and also CISC will organize a resource fair at the Crossroad Mall on this September from 11:00 to 3:00. So everybody is welcome, and also as of today, there are like 22 organizations is going to present their tables. So, yeah, so it's going to increase too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll do our picture after. We now have one more Masa Day proclamation read by Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House and accepted by Dr. Nassim Ghazanfarie.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the City of Bellevue is home to many Iranian-Americans who contribute to the city's diverse cultural and economic well-being; and whereas the murder of 22-year-old Massa Amini by the Islamic Republic Guidance Patrol, more commonly known as the morality police, on September 16th, 2022 sparked an Iranian movement known as Woman, Life, Freedom. And Amini became the symbol of this woman-led uprising. And whereas Woman, Life, Freedom turned into a global movement inspiring people around the world to stand with the courageous women of Iran, demanding basic human rights and gender equality. And whereas despite crackdowns on protests as well as executions after unjust trials, Iranian women continue their call for freedom and courageously employ civic defiance and refuse to follow laws undermining their intrinsic humanity. And whereas since September of 2022, Iranian-Americans have organized rallies in Bellevue to stand in solidarity with their sisters and their brothers in Iran as they fight for freedom. And whereas the City of Bellevue stands with Iranian women in their quest for basic human rights related to personal choice, to gender and identity, and condemns atrocities committed against women and children. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim September 16th, 2023, as Masa Day in Bellevue, to honor the women of Iran and their sacrifices in the pursuit of freedom.
Is Dr. Ghazanfarie here? Okay, great.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. My name is Nassim Ghazanfarie. I'm an Iranian-American physician, mother, human rights activist, but more than anything, I'm a woman. I'm going to just recite a verse in Persian. "Beni adam azay yek degarand ke dar afarinesh zeyyek goharand. Chozvi be drdah awarat rozegar degar ozfharan namanat qarar. Tokaz mihnete diyaran biqami nashayat ke naam atnahand ademi." This poem is actually written on the wall in the United Nations. The translation is, "Human beings are members of a whole. In creation of one essence and soul, if one member is afflicted with pain, other members uneasy will remain. If you have no sympathy for human rights, the name of human you cannot retain." Almost a year ago, on September 16th, 2022, an innocent young woman was killed. She was only 22 years old, traveling from a remote Kurdish city, a minority in Iran, visiting the capital city on the last day of summer. Agents of Islamic Republic arrested her for the crime of a few strands of hair showing. As they shoved her in the van, her brother begged them not to take her. He told them they were alone and knew nobody in the capital. He begged them, but they took his sister, beat her up in the van, and later dropped her half-dead body in a local hospital where she died after being on life support for two days. From head trauma, she suffered from being beaten in the head. Her death sparked a moment led by young Iranian women who redefined courage by pouring to the street, looking in the oppressor's eyes, and putting their symbol of oppression on fire. And as you said, Woman, Life, Freedom became the slogan for this uprising. Since then, Iranians have been clear in demanding replacement of this autocratic regime with a secular democracy. They continue to resist, and many more lives have lost, have been lost. And we are here, one year later, because people like you, complete strangers, thousands of miles away, decided not to remain silent and care, to speak up and condemn these atrocities. So on behalf of our community in Bellevue, everywhere in the United States and everywhere in the world, we commend you for your action and thank you for this opportunity. Woman, Life, Freedom.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. My name is Homira Bachtiari. I have been active for many years. I'm an Iranian activist and working hard toward liberating Iran. We are grateful on behalf of the people of Iran. Since last year, when Massa Amini was killed by the Islamic regime of Iran, more than 700 people, including 70 children, have been killed by this regime. And many young people have been executed without any reason. With strong ties with questionable countries and being in the sensitive region of the Middle East and the Strait of Hormuz, this danger will eventually directly affect United States of America and the West. So thank you so much for being in the right side of the history and stand with the people of Iran. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and do a picture with you first. Okay. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion to approve the agenda.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're on to oral communications. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening, there are six speakers pre-registered for oral communications. And before I start calling names, I want to let the general public know a few of the rules that the council has in place. So oral communications will last for a period of no longer than 30 minutes, and persons speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be given preference. If time remains, those speaking to items not on the agenda will be called. In addition, the presiding officer is authorized to give priority to those who have not spoken to council within the last 60 days, or who are speaking to items that will come on the agenda within the next 60 days. Each person will be allowed three minutes to speak, and only three speakers will be allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. In addition, I need to let you know that in compliance with Washington State campaign laws regarding the use of public facilities during elections, no speaker may support or oppose a ballot measure, or support or oppose a candidate for an election, which includes one's own campaign. Any speaker who begins discussing topics of this nature will be asked to stop. One final announcement is that the council is holding a public hearing this evening under item number nine for the Transportation Benefit District. If you signed up for oral communications to speak about the public hearing, you've automatically been moved to the public hearing, as we cannot hear comments under oral communications on that topic. And with that, I will call our first speaker, who is Willard Westry. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House, council members, and staff, for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Bill Westry, and I'm speaking this evening on behalf of the leadership team at the Bellevue Chapter of People for Climate Action. Later this evening, PCA members look forward to hearing Jennifer Ewing's Environmental Stewardship Update Report to the council. In a few weeks, on October 5th, we're also looking forward to our in-person meeting with all five of the new sustainability staff that the city has hired this summer. We want to again thank the council for budgeting the funds that allowed the city to do this much-needed sustainability staffing expansion. As the expanded sustainability staff settles into their new roles this fall and winter, our PCA leaders anticipate continuing dialogue with them around ways that are, that can make the, enhance the 2020 Environmental Stewardship Plan and make it more effective. We see the need for substantial bolstering of action that the city should take to address community-wide greenhouse gas emissions. This work is critical, since Bellevue's greenhouse gas emissions haven't yet slowed to put us on a trajectory to achieve the 50% emissions reduction by 2030 that the City Council has committed Bellevue to reaching. It doesn't mean only the City of Bellevue operations cutting its mission by 50%. It means all of us, residents and businesses as well, will need to reduce our emissions by 50%. This means that each of us, on average, will need to reduce our transportation emissions, including our air travel and our energy emissions in our buildings, by 50%. Other emissions containing life necessities like food and clothing and other purchases will certainly be even more difficult for us. All of this will be immensely challenging when you think about the details. It will require a cultural change in all of our lives, but the benefits will be even greater. We'll be on course to creating a sustainable future for our next generations. For that reason, we welcome a more concentrated effort by the city to cut community-wide greenhouse gas emissions, now that it has a more substantial staffing capacity to do so. We appreciate this opportunity to encourage strong city actions toward cutting greenhouse gas emissions. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Pam Johnston.
Hello, Pamela Johnston, 3741 122nd Avenue Northeast. I just wanted to say, I'm very happy to see the beautiful Bellevue is getting taken off. I did have a talk because I didn't know they were coming to my neighborhood this month. And so it's one of those things where we really need to get together and really get things moving in a way that the community is involved, because we need to involve it. This is basically community involvement at its core. And, you know, that's what we need in the city. We can tell that it's different. A couple of years ago, we went to Philadelphia, and every time we got off the highway, we just saw piles and piles of junk, piles and piles of dirt, piles and piles of garbage laying there beside the highway. And my daughter looked at it and said, "What's up with that?" You know, it's like, why do these people not care about their city? And it made a really weird challenge in your head, because you're walking over to the Liberty Bell, and all these things that are perfect, picture-perfect, in the National Park area, and then other areas that are just not the same. So I just wanted to thank you for that. And welcome to bridal trails next, this month. Bye.
Thank you. The next speaker is Michael Mather.
Good evening, council. I'm speaking for myself and the residents of Ashwood Court, a senior resident in downtown Bellevue. We have recently been notified of yet another 8% rent increase. Bellevue and King County have an AMI, which is an area medial income, used to ascertain local rents. This year, it is $146,000. This figure is astronomically higher than our social security checks. Our apartments were built 25 years ago and not meant to compete with the skyscrapers and high-end apartments surrounding us. Our apartments are nice, but our only amenity is a community room. Our apartments are nice, but our only amenity is a community room. No salons, gyms, pools, or bakeries, no luxuries. Most of our seniors are retired now, unable to work for additional funds, and are dependent on social security checks, checks and past savings, which are obviously not keeping up with high salaries of Microsoft, Amazon, and higher minimum wages. This on top of soaring food and gas prices are breaking the bank. We do not wish to add to the homeless crisis. Let me repeat that, we do not wish to add to the homeless crisis. My generation has paid its dues to society. I myself worked until the age of 75, then volunteered as a reading teacher for four years at Lake Hills Elementary School. As of October 1st, I will be paying 85% of my social security check for rent. That leaves me with $125 a month for expenses. I presume, I will not presume to know your income, but would venture to guess that you are not or would not pay 85% of your income for housing. All we are asking for is an exemption from this AMI, so our social security income can keep up with our rent increases. In the mail, I received a legislative update stating an allocation of 1.2 billion in housing investment to help unsheltered people to permanent housing, but nothing was mentioned to stabilize rent increases for seniors. I thank you for your time, and please know your understanding, compassion, and help can make a real difference in the lives of many seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miyake, can we have somebody from our affordable housing group reach out to this community, Ashwood Park?
Absolutely, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Susan Dale.
Good evening. I'm speaking about the same problem at Ashwood Court. It's a senior housing for independent living, and we were under the umbrella of DASH, which was downtown housing, but now it's been absorbed by another, well, we're not really sure, by CERC, and things have changed. I feel the great strength of a city like Bellevue is the diversity and ethnicity and of age, and we need to be more, have more understanding of income levels. Ashwood Court, until recently, offered affordable housing for seniors. I have lived at Ashwood Court for 11 years, and the rate of rent increases were 1% to 3% a year. In the recent years, rents have been increased by 8%, 9% per year, and in October, our rent will again increase by 9%. Not waiting until Social Security COLA's Cost of Living Adjustment is activated January of 2024. This increase in October leaves three months for seniors to adjust, to tighten their budget or dip into savings. For most people at Ashwood Court, our income is not adjustable, it is a fixed amount. With continual 8% and 9% increases per year is not sustainable, making Ashwood Court unaffordable for independent senior tenants. This continued rise in rents leaves seniors under stress and with few living alternatives. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. It's hard to understand how, when you put federal and city money into affordable housing, it can then transform into commercial rate. So that'll be interesting to look into. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Linda Gowing.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your attention, and I particularly appreciate the fact that the mayor sent someone over to talk to my resident. I also live at Ashwood Court. I've lived in Bellevue since I was four years old and went to Bellevue High School. And I loved it then, because there was a bull in our backfield, and there was a town now that I love, and I love living at Ashwood Court. 25 years ago, the city council supported public housing for seniors in the city of Bellevue. We've reached a point now in the maturity of the low-income housing tax write-offs, where the rental increases are changing the dynamic of who can live in senior housing. As Michelle pointed out, percentage-wise, in fixed income, it's impossible for seniors to keep up with the fact of competing rents. In 2022, the ownership was transferred to a CERC Living, which is a nonprofit agency out of, in Bellevue. CERC is not the enemy. They own 13 properties, they manage 27 communities in this general district. The two in Bellevue are Ashwood Court and Evergreen Court. Last September, our rents were raised 9%, and 12 months later, they were raised another 8%. This is excessive. It contradicts the purpose of low-income housing and their own tenant, which is a pillar to, say, purpose for housing and not profit. So whatever you can do as council people, as a mayor, and as the action that you took so quickly to listen to affordable housing needs in the beautiful city of Bellevue, I would applaud, and I thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. The final speaker on our preregistered list is Alex Zimmerman.
Zihayl, Adem, Nazi fascism, mafiosi, and bandita who support Iranian Muslim and Russian terrorists. My name is Alex Zimmerman, I live in Bellevue. More than 30 years.
Okay, I'm going to stop you right there. You cannot reference support for somebody who's running for council. I know you're talking about me, and I know you're talking about candidates, so I'm going to warn you not to do that again, please.
You can correct me, but for your time, not for mine. So this not happened first time. This is number one. Number two, I'm talking about war, but as we have right now, nothing to do with election. Thank you very much for your time, and give me back 20 seconds, what has you steal from me, doing this every meeting for the last 30 years? Yes, thank you very much. So I speak right now, because as we have right now, 11, 11, September 11. Is this exactly what as we have right now? We have long, long time with Muslim war. Is that because I'm a Jew? I cannot be quiet about this, because Iranian Muslim want to destroy Israel totally. And yesterday, a big, a big statement from Iranian minister, you know what it's mean about destroy Israel total. So this is number one, what is I want to speak around here? I want to understand who you are. Because last meeting, you know what it's mean? Deputy Mayor Jared, you know what it's mean? Take me out, call policemen, take me out, because I'm laughing. Yes, I'm laughing, because you're a clown. I'm laughing from you for many years, in every meeting, in every meeting, what is I have here for 30 years. I laughing with you, because you're a clown, and you use police forces like a political police, you know what it's mean? Like a Gestapo. It's exactly what as you did with this city for last 20-year total. For this, I speak right now to everybody, stop elect Democrat. They are bandita, a mafia, is totally destroy Bellevue. 35-year experience I have in Bellevue. I understand what is this mean? So I right now speak to everybody, stop elect this bandita. They all bandit, they all criminal. Stop elect them. So what is I want to speak with you right now? When you stop in this stupid 30-minute-ten people speak? We's 150,000 people city. We have right, you only one, one who doing this in all east side, maybe in all King County, because I speak all over, 100 times, 10, 15 times per week, for many years. So stand up, America, clean this dirty chamber from this bandita who represent Democrat Party. Thank you very much.
We do still have a few minutes remaining on oral communication, so at this point, I would ask if there's anyone else joining us this evening, I see you, Ms. Dean, who would like to speak to the council, please raise your hand. That includes those online, please use the raise hand function. I will remind folks, we do have a public hearing, you cannot make a comment about the Transportation Benefit District except at the public hearing. And also, we have heard three speakers regarding the Ashwood rent issue. And Ms. Dean?
Hi, good evening. I actually, I'm not here to speak about the Ashwood issue, but I am grateful that those ladies brought it up, because my mom's best friend lives here.
You're speaking to it.
What's that?
You're speaking to it.
Okay. Anyways, thank you, ladies. But what I really wanted to say was, I wanted to thank the city for taking action to clean up Southeast 41st Place, finally, after many years of... We built the shelter. We were told we needed to build a shelter. We built the permanent supportive housing, both are open. We are now in compliance with Martin versus Boise, so there's no reason why anybody should be living anywhere in their vehicles, other than if that safe parking lot ever gets open. And I did go down by the old shelter yesterday to see if anybody was living there, and there is one trailer there. And I did find other people living in their vehicles around the city in other places. I have photos. But what I'm really asking is, I was a little bit... I went down to Factoria today, and that whole street looks like poo poo, okay? Because when it was, when everybody cleared out of there by Friday morning, and what they left behind was unreal, and I've got photos of that, too. And I thought, okay, you know, maybe somebody will come in Friday afternoon, Saturday, whatever. I went back down there today, it's still all there. And as a matter of fact, there is, again, another vehicle trying to, that had camped overnight there, because that street is being advertised online as a place to camp. These were travelers from Canada, so I talked to her. She is putting a note on that website to indicate that you can't camp overnight there. So I was grateful for that. But as I was sitting there, kind of documenting what was going on, I had a young man that came along. He was clearly homeless, he was clearly on drugs, and he was picking through all the stuff that was left there. So if you want to know, I've been doing the homeless outreach in South Bellevue. I have had three gentlemen that I have been working with to get services, because we've had a man that built an encampment at the back of Woodlawn Park, who is service-resistant. I have a gentleman right now, who is living at my shopping center, who wants services, but can't get a bed at the shelter, and he is the exact kind of client you want to move on. And his friend, I helped last year get in and get services, and then I met this young man today and took him to the shelter, so thank you.
Thank you. I did not see any additional hands raised, one final call. Yes.
Yeah, please.
Okay. Sure, if you could state your name for the record when you sit down, thank you.
Hi, my name is David Haynes. I live in Overlake. I moved out here from Seattle, because my 19th bicycle was stolen, all my computers and business tools and everything. And I noticed that there's like a copycat of policy, where if there's a problem in Redmond, and the criminal walks across like 24th Avenue into Bellevue, all of a sudden, he's not a criminal anymore, because nobody's pursuing it. And I think you need to understand that we need like a law that trespasses junkie thieves, who are like smoking meth right next to the propane gas tanks at the grocery store. And on their way to like low-security, like addiction conscription, they have to be questioned properly by the cops to find out where they keep getting the drug to shut it down. Because after the All-Star break, or during the All-Star sweeps downtown Seattle, there were some more troubled souls that came swept through Bellevue and Overlake and Redmond, and somebody stole my 20th bike. And the cops got these political excuses, while they're not going to do anything about it. But yet, there's like all these evil drug pushers who are driving around in cars, who look for like addicts and troubled souls, and they start pushing the drugs. And when you call the cops about it, the cops are arguing with you in the wrong district, because if you call the cops in Redmond, the Bellevue pick up. But when you tell Bellevue, "What just happened?", they won't relay it verbatim specific, they make you start over and start arguing with the public defender sounding like 9/11 dispatch over at the police department. And they don't seem to be tactically trained to help the community deal with evil predatory criminals. And like, the Safeway in Overlake refuses to do anything about it, because they say the first time they call the cops, the guy who steals something comes back and is released right away. The second time, the guy's released, and then the third time, it's a felony. So the manager's too afraid to give the guy a felony. So now they treat other customers like crap and raise the rates, and it's kind of upsetting. But the thing is, there's a lot of people who are not a citizen in my neighborhood in Overlake, and they get treated like crap, because there's no representation and no protections for the renters, when you pay something like $2,500 a month for some newer building that's like nothing but a parking garage structure, that's cosmetically prettified, like a residential unit with paper-thin walls. And you slam the door, and it's bothering your neighbor. You can smell the toxic fumes from the garage that's overtaken the amenities. And you can't get any adjustment, and you can't get out right away, you can't get a carbon monoxide verification. And they just intimidate people, and it's not fair that, I think, in the Wall Street-owned technology companies around here, that they're taking advantage of it worker, and roughly 60% of all the capital gains that's generated by the working class are stolen from the local community, and they're given tax breaks, and then they buy up our Democratic elected who need to have legislation to prioritize financing 21st century homes, commercial buildings, and schools, with the banks not allowed to remortgage any more dilapidated, inflated, obsolete, flawed real estate.
I apologize, your time has expired. Thank you. And that does bring us to the end of oral communications, and I will pass it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We're on to the report of our city manager, Mr. Miyake.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. I have two items to report under the manager's report this evening. The first one is an update on the city's Keep Bellevue Beautiful program. Tonight's staff will be providing council with an informational update about the program, as well as highlighting two recent cleanup events that the city conducted. And joining us this evening is Mark Harmon, the Neighborhood Outreach Manager. To his left is Serena Miller, our Community Relations Coordinator. They are both from the Community Development Department. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you, Mark.
Good deal. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, and Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House and council. Serena and I are glad to be with you to provide updates this evening on the launch of the Keep Bellevue Beautiful program. Our update this evening is for information only, and there is no action that is requested from council. As you know, Keep Bellevue Beautiful was created as part of the Safe, Clean, and Vibrant City Initiative, with councils adopted 2023-24 city budget. City staff are currently managing contracts for the retrieval of abandoned shopping carts, and coordinating volunteers and groups to help clean a defined portion of Bellevue streets. And we're collaborating with other city programs to reduce graffiti and to promote waste reduction as well. The community has been extraordinarily helpful in reporting graffiti and abandoned shopping carts throughout the city for retrieval and removal through the My Bellevue app. As of today, our vendor has collected 1,400 carts. The current contract is meant to be an interim solution. The next step is to work with business to ensure that they're responsible for keeping shopping carts on their property, or to retrieve them when necessary. We are gathering data about where carts are coming from, and looking at best practices in other cities, and we intend to come back in quarter one of 2024 with recommendations on any code changes needed to support the effective management of shopping carts. In May, we came to you with a timeline to launch the program, and we've just completed Phase One, which included two cleanup events and established a volunteer base. This month, we will host the first monthly Signature Streets event, as Pamela mentioned. as Pamela mentioned, on northeast Hundred-and-Forty-Eighth Avenue in Bridle Trails area. And we are continuing to assess and incorporate lessons learned from the launch cleanup events and to organize the Adopt a Street program next spring. Serena.
We successfully hosted the first cleanup event on City Hall Plaza on Saturday, August twelfth with about eighty volunteers, representing a diverse spectrum of ages and backgrounds. Trained and provided with cleanup gear, our volunteers set out to safely pick up litter throughout downtown. We hosted the second cleanup event on Saturday, August nineteenth in the Factoria neighborhood with fifty-five volunteers. Factoria Marketplace generously welcomed us to stage the event at their site. We love the turnout from local residents and students from Newport High School. This highlights a great opportunity for our youth to earn community service hours with Keep Bellevue Beautiful. Within these two cleanup events, over ninety-five bags of trash were collected by our dedicated volunteers. They shared their observations about the cleanups and most importantly, how to prevent litter. A collaborative one-city effort was needed at both cleanup events. With support from utilities, police, fire and transportation's very own Ped B, we were able to promote recycling, walking safety, build stronger community relations and provide great volunteer experience. We are now moving into monthly cleanup events in more neighborhoods. Our next event is a Signature Street cleanup on Saturday, September thirtieth in the Bridle Trails area, followed by Lake Hills, Bell Red and Crossroads, with more to come in twenty-twenty-four. We want to especially invite surrounding neighbors to participate. Please visit the Keep Bellevue Beautiful webpage to register and for more information.
Serena and I would like to highlight our gratitude for the numerous colleagues, including those behind the scenes that aren't in any of these pictures, who have over the past several months helped to ensure that these events were safe, well-planned, effective and well-attended. Finally, we are thankful for all of our volunteers and for the supplies that were generously provided for the program by our business and civic partners. Special acknowledgement for our neighborhood associations and partner businesses that have made these events so successful, including Amazon, Starbucks, Wallace Properties, Bellevue Downtown Association and the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce. Thank you so much, council.
Thank you. It's wonderful.
So Mayor, I have one last item.
Yeah.
Under the manager's report. And that item is, I would like to introduce our newest member of the city manager's office. And to my left is the deputy city manager, Joseph Todd. Joseph has extensive leadership background in both the private and public sectors. And he will be overseeing our internal services within the city. And in the very near future, he has scheduled time with each of the council members to get more acquainted with them.
Great. Welcome, Mr. Todd. Okay, thank you. Onto council business and new initiatives. Councilmember Lee has a recommendation to the Environmental Services Commission. Go ahead, Mr. Councilmember.
Thank you, my new mayor. In your packet, you have a memo from Karen Roberts, Deputy City Clerk. Recommendation of a Environmental Services Commission vacancy. And so I therefore move to appoint Ann Mayahira Hinoz to serve a full term expiring on May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven as the newest Environmental Services Commission member.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Terrific. Thank you, Ms. Councilmember Lee. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I need to approve the consent calendar. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We are on to our public hearing. I'm going to let staff introduce this. Or Mr. Miyake, you may introduce it.
I'll go ahead and mention this is a public hearing regarding the assumption of the Transportation Benefit District. And just by way of background, prior to the August recess, council did approve the formation of the Transportation Benefit District. Tonight's public hearing is for council to consider providing direction to assume the district into the city. This is purely an administrative step. And for tonight, there is no consideration of imposing a tax or determining how to use potential funding tonight. So after the public hearing, staff are seeking council's consideration of finalizing the associated assumption at a future meeting. And joining us this evening are Andrew Singalakis, Transportation Director, Chris Long, Assistant Director of Mobility, John Risha, our Finance Director, Evan Phillips, City Budget Manager. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Andrew for a brief staff report before you open up the public hearing.
Yeah, thank you, City Manager Miyake, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse and the City Council. I would like to reiterate what Brad has just mentioned. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to determine if the city should assume the Transportation Benefit District. At the July seventeenth meeting, the council did establish the district. The step to assume simply means that the council can do district business as the council rather than stepping out of that role and convening as a benefit district board. The decision to fund the district will come later. And to reiterate that forming and assuming a Transportation Benefit District in no way commits the council to fund the district. There are several communities who have formed districts without funding them. And we are in the middle of our public outreach efforts. That should go on until the end of the month. And Chris will be discussing that. But we do commit to you to be coming back in a study session where we can talk about potential funding details. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris.
Actually, to John.
No, John, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Before you is our timeline on where we're at in the process. We have modified the timeline slightly since our last conversation. And we have disconnected the decision on assumption and funding to ensure that it is clear that there has been no decision made on how or if or what funding might be selected. And so the goal is to bring before you, per your direction, the conversation on assumption, have the public hearing and receive direction from you. And then to enable your discussion and direction on what happens next. Specifically, as Andrew spoke to, on July seventeenth, the district was formed. That district now exists as a legal entity and independent taxing authority recognized by the state of Washington. To take action as the district, you currently would act in an ex officio and independent manner because you as the council members of the city of Bellevue would take off that hat and put on your district hat and function as that district. That means the rules and the processes that govern your dialogue here as the city of Bellevue council would not apply. You would need to establish those rules. You would have to establish your procedures, your record keeping, administration and support to continue in that process. Not a problem. There are ways to do all of that. But it is different than you acting as you are tonight as the city of Bellevue council members. Council action on whether to levy any taxing source or to go after any fees is a very separate and future discussion. It is not part of the administrative process. And I rarely call something an administrative process because there are always implications to it. This is a truly administrative place. So what is district assumption? State law grants the city the authority to assume the powers of the district, not the other way around. So you as the council. The legislature basically said, how do we make it easy for a jurisdiction to then take those powers and authorities and act in a way that their public is comfortable with and knows? Assumption again would allow you, the council, to act as the council as part of your regular business rather than as a separate entity. The assumption would streamline the management and administration of the district, enabling us as staff to function as the staff that we are to the city of Bellevue and you to act as the council members elected by the residents of Bellevue. But without that assumption, there would need to be other things that are put in place, including a contract between the city of Bellevue and the district. It does not remove any of the accountability requirements of RCW thirty-six seventy-three. And it does not assume any funding action whatsoever. So assumption is truly about bringing that legal process into you as the council. At our last discussion, council provided direction to us to prepare for assumption but did not make a decision on assumption. There has been no council direction or action related to funding. And we just wanted to make sure that was clear. Tonight is a public hearing only on the administrative process or step of assumption. Any potential funding discussion will be at your direction and as part of a mid-biennial or biennial budget process through your normal actions where you are in the practice of weighing the choices of revenue and expenditure. And so that you could see the full picture in that process. Chris.
So to go back to our last public hearing and recap what we heard at that public hearing and what we've done since regarding outreach. Off the bat, we heard concern about adding additional cost taxes to the residents and businesses of Bellevue. Although we did hear general support that maintenance is important. And so there was a lot of questions about how do we, you know, more explanation how the needs would be identified and resources would be used and how the funds will be allocated on a regular basis. So we took this out to the public. We had three events that we attended. We have a fourth coming up this weekend where we had tabling to talk to people. One was the Keep Bellevue Beautiful event here at City Hall. We were at the farmer's market at Crossroads. This coming weekend, we'll be at Crossroads again for the welcoming fair. So we had a lot of engagement there. Probably spoke to well over a hundred people through those events and trying to just get the word out about this program and to also get people to take the survey that we have that's currently running. And I'll speak to that a little bit later. We did a lot through social media, translation of all the materials that we have, including the survey. We advertised all the events that we were attending and also each of the webinars that I'll also mention. The messages went out to the contacts we had for every neighborhood association to let them know about the coming events and webinars that were being hosted and also to provide the opportunity for us to come speak to their groups as well. The survey is still in process. We've had just over a hundred responses. It runs until the end of the month. This is an example of one of the questions that we've asked. And we'll get into more details about the survey once it's closed. But we are looking to get information on what maintenance functions are the most important to the residents. And both on this topic and the topic of what new infrastructure is most important, it focused around our sidewalk program, our asphalt maintenance and safety. Those are the biggest ones that we're hearing about so far. As I mentioned, webinars, we've done three so far. Two that were focused more towards neighborhood associations and were advertised widely on Next Door. And then one that was tailored more towards community-based organizations. We have one more scheduled next week on the twentieth. As we move forward from this stage, as we've mentioned, the next steps for council will be to determine whether we assume the district, discuss the transportation needs and then how the funding could potentially be used. And if funding is recommended, to what level and what sources will be provided and the priority for that, how we'll prioritize the budgeting. And last, back to the direction for today. We're looking to hold the assumption public hearing and to direct staff to return with the ordinance describing the city council's assumption of the rights, powers and functions and obligations of the Transportation Benefit District.
Great, thank you. So we will have the public hearing. We'll listen to comments. And then we'll close the public hearing and have a discussion amongst ourselves. I want the community to know that we have read the many emails and the input that we've received from you. This is, as they say, an administrative process on whether to assume the powers and authorities of the district. It's not about whether or not we use those powers and authority. It's not about how much money we will raise or how we will raise it. And it's not about what we would spend that money on. It is simply about this assumption of powers and authority of the district, correct? Okay. So with that, may I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And we will probably ask you back after the public hearing. Okay. City Clerk, do you have somebody, anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There are thirteen pre-registered speakers for the public hearing. And before I start calling names, I will let you know that, as you mentioned, Mayor, there were a number of emails that have all been included in your desk packet for this evening. There were around eighty comments and there are around eighteen or nineteen others in your email as well. And with that, I will call our first speaker, who's Paul Clark.
So there's three-minute limit on speaking but no limit as to how many people can speak to this, correct?
Exactly. All one topic. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, council members, City Manager Miyake. I'm speaking tonight in opposition to the trajectory that the city is on. I appreciate that we're dealing with an interim step between establishing and actually funding this district. But I think it's reasonable that residents of the city, including myself, are nevertheless concerned about the trajectory. Like most Bellevue voters, I've had an open mind on previous tax increases. I supported last year's parks levy, for example, because the city clearly showed the people of Bellevue what we'd be getting in exchange for those tax dollars and that finding the funds for the critical projects noted in that levy would not be feasible through the normal budgeting process. I don't believe that this TBD process, strange set of initials, by the way, has been similarly justified. My primary concern is that the justifications in previous meetings where we're talking about embarking on this process, enabling up to ten million or more dollars for a stated three-million-dollar need. And I really believe the council should have a higher threshold for considering moving down this path than a thirty percent defined need. Additionally, taxes are an ever more significant contributor to the high cost of living in our city. So looking ahead when making this decision tonight or potentially on funding, I just would ask that you consider that we have too many seniors and folks near retirement living in Bellevue that have either left or are on the verge of leaving because the tax burden is really not compatible with their fixed incomes. There should be an extremely high threshold before the council acts to make the situation worse. Additionally, we are facing uncertain economic times ahead. And every tax increase makes the next one that much harder for the public to accept. Should another downturn transpire with a consequent budget crisis, this council will need maximum flexibility to resolve that crisis. And if you adopt this ordinance and proceed along the path of funding it, I do believe that your flexibility will be diminished. You've already heard from a former council member who's confident that more careful budgeting can find the three million dollars without resorting to new funding mechanisms. And in conclusion, I urge you to pursue that path. Thank you.
Do the next speaker is Ann Coughlin.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, city manager. First, a rave. I went to Bellwether on Friday and saw the classical jazz thing. I think it's wonderful what you're doing there in the Spring District. And now to this matter. I'm opposed to the formation of this district. I'm opposed to any new tax. As Paul said, we are on a very bad trajectory. And I don't believe they should have quasi judicial powers. It will be funded at some point. The fact they're not doing it tonight is very suspect to me. It's going to be deferred. First, you do this and then vote on something else. This is the fourth tax increase by the council without voter input in ten months. Point zero one percent business tax, one percent property tax. The tax that they're asking, and to be decided. That's kind of how this has been rolling out. And it's, you know, it is really not funny. The proposed tax would generate three times the funding required. According to staff, the tax would generate ten million a year, even though they need three million for the deferred maintenance, which supposedly was the reason they formed this or felt the need to form this. And that this will, in some form, we're going to pay for it and we're tapped out. So I see. So, I cede my remaining minutes to Craig. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Maria Frost. Ms. Frost, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can. Your time begins now.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and council members. My name is Maria Frost, and I'm the Transportation Director at Kemper Development Company. I'm here to comment on the assumption of a Transportation Benefit District in Bellevue and the desired sales tax increase of .1%, which city staff are recommending without a public vote. The administrative process of formation and assumption of the TBD and the proposed tax city staff have discussed with groups like the BDA, Chamber, and Council are inextricably linked. We must look at what the city wishes to fund and accomplish and how in order to decide whether the TBD is necessary in the first place. Unfortunately, we don't know what the city wants to fund. City staff have proposed that council approve a .1% permanent increase in the city's sales tax without defining what projects would be funded. This raises obviously questions about transparency. City government should not ask council for a sales tax increase with details to follow. People should know upfront what they are buying. Even more baffling is why staff want $10 million in higher taxes each year to fund $3 million in road maintenance work that can be accommodated in the city's $2.2 billion budget. In the last 10 years, sales tax revenue in Bellevue has grown 123%. The city anticipates collecting a record $221 million in sales tax revenue for the current budget, and this trend is forecast to continue by an average of about 5% per year for years beyond 2024. Where is the emergency? This is not primarily about asphalt and sidewalk repair as much as it is about creating a new revenue stream for transportation projects the public is unlikely to know about, much less support. City staff will argue that the remaining $7 million would pay for new projects like bike and pedestrian paths, neighborhood traffic calming, Vision Zero, and other city plans. If these programs are truly worthy of a tax increase, why not make your case to the voters and let them decide? Instead, we're simply supposed to support the creation and permanent funding of the TBD and trust that it will make sense later. Based on the city's own budget, annual reporting, and CIP, we do not support the formation and assumption of the TBD or the taxes the city wishes to impose through it. Please encourage staff to reprioritize the budget and offer an alternative approach that uses the many existing taxes and fees Bellevue residents already pay, including those that have recently been passed in the last few years. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. The next speaker is Barbara Hughes.
My name is Barbara Hughes. I'm a resident of Bridle Trails in Bellevue 98005. I'm here tonight to put on record my objection to the TBD and proposed increase in sales tax. There's been inadequate outreach. I've just heard what the city staff have said about the outreach, but really, I don't feel that many of the people living in Bellevue know about the TBD at this stage. This is a very complex matter to understand. An outreach needs to be in multiple different, easy-to-understand formats and made available to all. The time of year is just wrong. Many people are unavailable during the summer, traveling or activities and juggling childcare and jobs, et cetera. Right now, it's just been Labor Day weekend. Many people are extremely busy returning to work and getting children settled back into the new school year. I happened to meet with my entire immediate neighborhood yesterday. It happened to be our annual HOA meeting, so this is a great opportunity to inform everyone of my understanding of the TBD. I have to say that absolutely nobody knew anything about it, and they were all quite astounded. So, your outreach has not been effective in my neighborhood. You need to be sure that the public are aware of and understand this complex issue. You need to allow sufficient time and resources for this to take place, and this has not happened yet. Today, I'm asking the council to direct the city manager to put the TBD on hold until it can be proven that there has been adequate outreach so that the people of Bellevue, who will be subjected to any sales tax, understand the need for the TBD and increase. In addition, I personally disagree that the TBD and $10 million to be raised is necessary, and I'm personally asking that the council direct the city manager to look deeper into the city finances and fund this money from within the current budget if it is proven to be necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Victor Bishop. Mr. Bishop, I do not see you connected virtually, and I don't see you in person. If you are connected virtually, can you please use the raise hand function to identify yourself? Star nine if you're connected with a phone. Okay. Do not see Mr. Bishop. I will circle back. Next speaker is Betsy Hummer.
I live in Lake Hills. I am here in opposition to the administrative part of the Transportation Benefit District. I talk with residents throughout Bellevue, and their greatest concerns are cut-through traffic, cut-through traffic and taxes. So, I do not think that anything associated with any tax increase should be presented to the people of Bellevue without a thorough understanding of what that causes. We had that, the levy recently, and people are still talking about it's supposed to reduce congestion. They're still talking about congestion. So, they want to see the traffic fixed. This doesn't look like a fix. It looks like an extra tax that the people of Bellevue won't benefit from, and I would like you to not move forward on the Transportation Benefit District. Thank you.
The next speaker is Craig Speel. Mr. Speel, I'm sorry, did you disconnect your laptop, Charles?
I just connected.
Okay, thank you.
So, if you can reset, I haven't started yet. Does he get live? One minute, 23 seconds. Okay, good evening. My name is Craig Speel, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Neighbors for Liverpool, Bellevue, a large and grown coalition of Bellevue residents. We are strongly opposed to the formation of the tax TBD and the respective sales tax increase. Contrary to what you heard from staff, we need to be honest. The only reason to approve a TBD is to impose a tax. This is the elephant in the room, and contrary to the statements made by staff, those statements are very inaccurate. If approved, this will be the fourth tax that council has approved in 10 months without vote of the community, and this is in addition to the affordable housing tax, also approved without voter approval. As stated, the formation of the TBD is very inappropriate. As acknowledged, the proposed tax will generate over $10 million annually, yet only 30% would be for maintenance. Majority would fund, quote, "an ongoing capital program of projects yet to be defined." Creating a $7 million slush fund is not fiscally responsible. We are asking council to do your job and apply fiscal governance and due diligence today and stop this madness and vote against the TBD. We do not believe it's appropriate to fund maintenance to the city's roads and sidewalks. This should be the city's first priority, not the last. As with any budget, one needs to look internally and prioritize expenditures, and surely with a budget of $2.2 billion, $3 million can be found. If budgets can't be found, then it should be allocated from the city's 49 million dollars reserves. And only, and only as a last resort, the TBD could be approved, limited to $3 million with a sunset clause. Council has made positive steps to support affordable housing, but you need to focus on affordable living. We all acknowledge that sales taxes are regressive and impact at-risk populations disproportionately. And while individually, these taxes may be small, collectively, they have a significant impact to a growing number of households who are one paycheck away from being unhoused. For seniors, the collective impact risks their ability to age in place. Continuing increase in taxes cannot and should not be the answer. Voters expect accountability, fiscal governance, and transparency, and supporting the TBD fails on every one of these counts. Approval of the TBD risks eroding public trust in you, the council, as well as the city's transportation department. I look forward to working with council to prioritize funding and increase fiscal governance and discipline. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carl Vanderhook.
Dear Mayor Robinson, council members, good to see you. My name is Carl Vanderhook, Vanderhook Corporation. I'm here today to voice opposition to the assumption of the recently created Transportation Benefit District. The proposed taxes would generate $10 million annually and far exceed the identified need of $3 million each year to cover deferred transportation maintenance. Further, a real plan to spend the excess tax revenue has not been offered to the public for consideration. For this reason, the Transportation Benefit District should be voter-approved, as should the funding mechanism to support it. The decision on how the money is raised and what it is spent on should be made by your constituents, the Bellevue taxpayers. The public's knowledge of this funding mechanism and the city's transparency regarding it are severely lacking. The three in-person events held seeking public input consisted of an info table at the Bridle Trails Night Out, Keep Bellevue Beautiful event, and the Crossroads Farmer's Market. These passive events are not the proper venue to provide feedback on the Transportation Benefits District. The city Transportation Benefit District survey asks for what residents want fixed, not if they want increased taxes to pay for it. What is the extra $7 million per year for? If the city wants to fund new CIP infrastructure projects with this tax increase, then the public should vote, and the city should be held responsible. If the public sees the value in these improvements, then public levies should be utilized and voter-approved. What I learned in Bellevue Essentials about the city budget process is that prioritization of the city budget is a difficult yet crucial task to create a balanced budget. As Don Davidson and my grandfather taught me, it is through being fiscally responsible that Bellevue has grown to become such a special place. From the City of Bellevue Budget website, the city uses a budgeting for outcomes, also known as priorities of government, process called Budget One to develop the city's budget. Budget One puts the emphasis on community expectations for government services. The process is designed to focus on results and priorities and shifts the emphasis from paying for costs to buying results. Identified community priorities are put first, and accountability, innovation, and partnerships are emphasized. If the city failed to do their job in keeping a balanced budget, then it is their job to correct it, not the taxpayers. It is the community's expectation that the government operates in a fiscally responsible way and be held accountable. Creating a Transportation Benefit District operated by this council and funded by a non-voter-approved tax increase with unidentified projects or timelines is not consistent with the Budget One focus on putting identified community priorities first or emphasizing accountability. Please add my name to the list of opposition to the assumption of the Transportation Benefit District and associated tax increases. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kevin Wallace.
Hello. Fun to be back in chambers again. Good to see all of you. Deputy City Manager Todd, nice to see you. Welcome to the city. I'm Kevin Wallace, 16770 Southeast 49th Street, formerly on the City Council. And back in 2009, when Jennifer and I were elected to the council, we put an end to plans to raise the property tax by 3% per year for a decade because it was the wrong time to do it. We were in the middle of a recession, right? The great financial crisis was upon us, and our constituents were hurting financially, and it wasn't the time to do a tax increase or yet another tax increase, as the years before we got on the council, there had been those tax increases. And very similar today, you know, we've had in the last year, year and a half, four different tax increases that were imposed either by the council or through a public vote, and I supported all of them. The property tax levy for parks, the sales tax levy for affordable housing, the VNO tax increase for police, and the property tax increase for the general budget. I was also an architect of the fire levy and the 2016 transportation levy that's already providing $10 million for the transportation budget. So, with this, why wouldn't I support it? Well, because this is very different than the past projects. All the other past tax increases had come with a plan or at least a discussion about how the city had gone through and identified a true need for the money and that the tax increases were a necessary predicate to doing something or a need that the city had, right? So, if you back and look at all those tax increases, they fit that mold. And on the capital projects, they were put to a vote of the people. In this case, first of all, the stated need for this is $3 million for maintenance money. The budget should not, you should not be raising taxes for maintenance, period. It should be the first priority of the city's dollars, right? The first existing revenue should be going to pay for maintenance, and then the next priority should be looking at, as you run out of money, maybe you need to fund things for other projects, but you don't do it with a new tax increase. So, does the city need a new levy for new projects? Probably. The comp plan that we're talking about right now has this massive increase in density, and right now, the comp plan has no projects identified for dealing with all that congestion that it's going to cause. So, should the transportation department go out and figure out a good plan and present it to you and say, "That's what we need the money for, and here's what we need to do," and then put a TBD in place and then propose a sales tax increase? Okay, but right now, we don't have that information. So, that's really what's frustrating to me, and I think other people about this process, is we're really putting the cart before the horse. There's no need to put a TBD in place right now. You could get the plans and have the city transportation department demonstrate the need for the funds, then adopt a TBD, and then adopt a tax increase, but it doesn't need to be done right now. So, I hope you consider that and postpone this vote or just vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Patty Mann.
Thank you for allowing our comments. Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and council members, I appreciate you allowing us to be here. As a lifelong resident of Bellevue, I've always felt that our city council members truly sought to represent the Bellevue citizens and to give the best, to the best of the abilities of the city council. They focused on our community by keeping our citizens safe, supporting those who are unable to support themselves, adopting a business-friendly environment to provide the commerce necessary for our thriving city, and working within their budget to keep the taxes reasonable. The citizens of Bellevue have generally supported our city council. We've trusted in the council's good faith efforts to guide their actions. In return, the citizens found approval for city's parks bonds, transportation levies, as well as school levies in efforts to maintain and increase the property values in which the city benefits. It's been noted and appreciated that the council members seem to have shown that they're less concerned about their seats on a governing body and more devoted to their roles as public servants. Now, you're considering a sales tax increase to not only provide transportation maintenance project budget, but also to provide an estimated $7 million fund that's undedicated and unidentified. This doesn't seem to be in keeping with our trust and our ideals of good-faith operations. With the recent economic challenges for everyone, everyone, this doesn't seem to be an appropriate time to establish any sort of slush fund on the backs of our Bellevue citizens. The ability to use this unassigned fund in an arbitrary and capricious manner by the council erodes the trust that we believe you work to strengthen. So, as you move into the ex-officio position, and then as to the assumption as councils, please don't adopt the sales tax increase in the assumption of the Transportation Benefit District without identifying specific deficiencies that will be eliminated by these funds. I thank you for your consideration, and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. The next speaker is Al Rosenthal.
Thank you, council, for letting me speak. I oppose the staff-proposed .1% sales tax. Yeah, it might sound like a small amount of money, but you know what? Why don't you look for where you can save money rather than increasing taxes on the taxpayers or the customers, as I would like to look at them. There are a lot of things you should look at, too, the way you spend money. For instance, one thing I always think about is the For instance, one thing I always think about is the bike, new bike trail over in Factoria. It's a trail, a bridge. A fortune must have been spent building that, and you almost never see any bikes on it. Somebody should stand out there and count the number of bikes that use it on a Saturday, a Sunday, and a day during the week, figure out how much you spent per trip for bike, spending on something like that. And the reason I bring this up for cuts in spending in the future, if you're going to spend on something like that, cut that, and then don't raise the taxes. Other examples that you could save money on, I sent you photographs of your service center over here. I went there twice in June. For the last three years, that service center has been empty of people. Almost nobody is behind the back wall. What a corporation would do if they wanted to save money or earn extra income is they'd sublet out their space that they weren't using. If for three years, you're not going to use that, and those pictures that I took in June on two different days were not lunchtime, they were working hours, and those desks are empty, and when you try to speak to somebody, they wouldn't be in the back either, they'd be at home. If you're not going to use your office space, try to sublet it out. I know it would be odd, but if you're not going to use it for three years, then what I'll also think about, earlier today, somebody wants you to spend more money on climate change. What they're really talking about is runaway warming due to CO2, and Jennifer Ewing's name mentioned. I'd love to have a conversation with you guys when you're talking about spending on climate change. That's another place you could save money. You shouldn't be spending a dime on climate change. The reason is, if you go to the Burke Museum and you look, Seattle was covered in 3,000 feet of ice 16,000 years ago. All that ice melted wasn't due to an increase in CO2. That's been a cycle every 100,000 years. Seattle's covered in ice 90,000, 100,000 years, like it is now for 10,000, 20,000 years. Not because of the changes in CO2. CO2 has gone up in the last 16,000 years. That's because we've had warming, and when the ocean warms, it expels CO2. So the reason CO2 is not the driver is CO2 is a log function, and it's warming. The first 100 parts per million, really significant. We're at about 400 parts per million now. If you went from 400 parts to 800, doubling where we are now, it's a 1 degree Fahrenheit change. That's what the equations say. But it seems like nobody will look at the equations, nobody will look at geological history. Next time Jennifer Ewing presents to you, give me a chance. I'll show you charts and curves that will question runaway warming due to CO2.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. The next speaker is Pam Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and staff. This is a process, but you can stop it now. You can take back what you've already approved. We don't need to go any further on this. You don't need to waste any more of our time. Staff did not spend the time on this. They did not get this in a way that even should have came to council in this much data. It's, it's, nothing's there, and nothing's there. They said that there's a survey. The survey says, "How do you want to spend the money?" It doesn't say, "Do you want to spend the money or do you not want to spend the money?" Or, "Here's what you get with it, here's what you get without it." No, it says, "How do you want to spend the money?" This makes it a high priority for maintenance being taken out of the budget and makes it the highest priority in the city because this will get funded separately from everything else in the general budget. We're talking about affordable housing. This is more important than affordable housing, is you're telling us. You're telling us this is more important than safety. It's not. It has a big, huge budget already, and what you're adding to it is administration costs and complexity, so it's even more hard to see what's going on with it and where to cut and where we need things. My house right now got an overlay. I made them wait for a while for our street to get overlaid until after they built the water tower. It hasn't been striped yet. You know, we could live some time without striping if we needed to. We don't need to have people getting another tax increase for striping. Other places, it might be more important. But do the work, guys. Don't waste our time. This has taken a lot of time from people to figure out what the heck this is going on because it's so complex. And it doesn't have a sunset clause. We're going to just be fueling this forever. Why don't we make a project with its long-term maintenance part of the project as part of a one entity? Like, do we want to keep this, doing this every year? You've got to know how it's going to affect us over time, not just the first time we put it in. Who knows that a tax benefit district is a new tax? Transportation benefit is a new tax. You've got to have transparency, but you also have organization. You've got to understand. You've got to educate the people. Most of all, you need to give us a choice and let us understand the choice, and staff needs to give you the choice at the very beginning of this, to say no and keep saying no. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of our preregistered list. I would ask at this point if there's anyone joining us here in council chambers who would like to speak to the council or anyone online, please raise your hand. Sir, please come to the table. If you could state your name for the record.
Thought I signed up online, but here I have Mike Nicrom, Newport Hills. My great-grandfather developed out most of the original university district, built homes, commercial space, and so on. Skip forward two generations, I built my first house in Bellevue in '76. Since then, I've built scores of houses, thousands of feet, a city right-of-way, built first, one of the first privately-funded stormwater detention systems, and did the first privately-funded LEED-certified office building, first pervious parking lot, first pervious city street in the city of Kirkland. And I've discovered a little secret I'll share with you all. High-cost regulations won't lead to low-cost housing. All my pervious systems have since failed. The stormwater detention vault that Ron Smith and I built in '92 was capable, is still capable today of holding a six-inch rainfall, storm event, something that's never occurred, will never occur, yet that vault still sits mostly empty all the time. Our high taxes are a direct result of high-cost regulations. So I, unlike your previous speakers here, I would actually advocate that you adopt this district and kill it. All right? I'd just really like to see the suits that sat up here that made the presentation. I'll put them to work because I need plumbers, I need electricians, I need flat workers. I don't need more suits regulate, over-regulating not only our housing but our infrastructure, which is what leads to our high cost-of-living here in Bellevue. Thank you.
Thank you. I did see Heidi Dean. Please come to the table.
My name is Heidi Dean. I live at 11661 Southeast 56th Street in Newport Hills. And thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council, and staff for allowing me to speak tonight. One of my favorite scenes is just because you can doesn't mean you should. And my dear friend Renee Bennett often talks about the camel's nose under the tent and what that means, and, and sometimes if you say, "Well, just because we've, we're looking at it doesn't mean we're going to do it." Most oftentimes, it's going to happen if it's being looked at. So I just want to, I'm not here representing the Newport Hills Community Club. I'm representing myself. My club decided not to put out information to our residents, so you don't, you aren't going to hear from them. But I will reference the fact that when I was first elected as community club president in 2013, I came in and I was handed a club that had $32 left in the checking account because people had been so fiscally irresponsible, and I had to spend two years building that back up, and I had to make really hard decisions, wants and needs, and, and get creative with that, and handed over a healthy club and had it destroyed two years later by another board, and spent years trying to build the finances back up again, and, and again, tried to be responsible and creative with that. So I do understand, I didn't have the budget that you do, but I do understand what it is to, to struggle with back projects that you'd like to do and that sort of thing. But I never raised the dues in all that time. We have remained at $10 dues so that people could be members that were of all-income households. But one of the things, you know, it was interesting because at our neighborhood walk in Newport Hills, I was encouraged to support the TBD because, as many of you know, my son's been working as a seasonal streets maintenance fellow in, and I was told that this TBD would, supporting it, would actually fund my son's job, which is shocking because when I talked to other budget hawks, people that were smarter than me about this, I was told, "No, your son's job is already funded, so are all those other guys in, in streets." So I was a little upset about that. People are being taxed to death here in, in Bellevue. I'm going to be 53 in October, my husband will be 54, and our friend who lives with us will be 61, and we needed him to live with us to cover all these taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. I believe I saw a hand, but not clearly. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. And no hands online, Mayor. I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Any opposed? I'm going to stop here and take a break, about a 10-minute break. Conversation on the Transportation Benefit District, we've had our public hearing, and we heard all the public comments. We closed the public hearing. It's now time for council discussion. So I'm going to start with Councilmember Barksdale.
No comments at the moment.
Okay, councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the presentation and getting all of the comments from the community and just understanding a bit more about where the community is on this. So, I mean, John, as we talked about earlier, the question that I have is, we haven't had the conversation as part of the mid-buy and what the revenue projections are going to be and how we look at the holistic needs for all the services in the community. So we aren't ready to have a discussion on step three. So I am trying to understand what is the urgency and the need to take step two today with an assumption? And as we look holistically at this as a potential tool, it's, it's not clear to me what the consequences would be if we were to make a choice not to make this assumption unless or until we get to a discussion, understanding holistically about our budget, the revenues, and the trade-offs and the priorities that we have. And, and so as we were talking about earlier with the little, little candies and understanding these steps, you know, I'm just still unclear about what the downside is of not taking a step right now with the assumption and, and what that means.
Councilmember, thank you. My perspective is that there are two paths before you. You have a district that has been formed. Currently, that jurisdiction exists as an entity. You can choose to do nothing until after you have a conversation about need and give us direction as to whether and if you provide for use of some of the funding options. That is an option that is before you. The option that staff has brought forward of assumption based off of our conversations, there is an important aspect of assumption that brings it into your process. Right now, you have a district that exists. You could convene under whatever rules you are to establish, separate from city establishment, and convene as a district and take action, whether part of the district or part of the budget process or separate from it. It is a risk, and from our staff perspective, we were looking to the perspective, how do you keep that clarity and transparency and keep, and a set of rules on us as staff and the rules that you have put in place for your own governance in place that, from a working standpoint? So the ability to, the option of assuming provides those protections, safeguards, and guardrails, if you will, around the process for what would happen. You are also welcome not to, to take any action and leave that district sitting to the side, and there is not a downside to that except for the risk of exposure about this thing that does exist. And so that's really truly is your space.
Okay, and so, just so I'm clear, the risk you're talking about, that, that this assumption would provide of protections, the safeguards, would be if we, as a council, then chose to convene a meeting of the TBD? Is that what you're saying?
The TBD with, as a board of directors, because you, as individuals who are the governing body of this city, take off that hat, and you are now also the board of the governing body for the, the district. You can convene at any point under that district's rules, not under the city's rules.
Okay, so as a council, we can make a choice that that isn't something we're going to do, and then this protection is unnecessary?
I actually think that might be a legal question that, that I, I don't know about the necessity of it, but you would have to establish that the district will be operating by your rules. And so you would convene as the district, establish those rules, if I remember correctly. But I, I would turn to legal counsel just to validate that.
Right now, my understanding is that you have not established any rules as of yet in that, as the governing body of the TBD. So while the district has been formed, the board of directors, as John was talking about, that's all of you as your individual, in your individual capacity. You have not done anything yet. So there are no rules as of yet because you have not convened, you have not established those rules.
Right. And now, what, what this would do is just, you'd be able to take agenda items that relate to the Transportation Benefit District under the council's agenda, not as a different body.
Okay, so we can have the conversations around what are the needs that we might have, how do we look at priorities, revenues? All of that conversation can happen without any vote on the assumption of a TBD. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Then I'd like to understand from my colleagues the, the urgency of, of assuming right now based on that. Thanks.
Councilmember Robertson.
So to me, this, the assumption is not really, it's just a procedural step to make it so that the formation is kind of complete. We've formed it, but if we do not assume it, then should we want to, for example, send a matter to the voters for a tax? It has been suggested. Then we would need to hold a separate meeting as Transportation Benefit District Commissioners, the, instead of having it be part of a council meeting, but it would be the same people. The challenge with that is that it would require a lot more staff work, which is a lot more money. And this is a question for the finance director. Am I correct that to the extent that we had staff doing work for the district, they would need to be paid? The, the, the funding of that position or that partial position or work would need to be accounting-wise tracked to the district? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And the district has no funding?
That is also correct.
Okay, so it would, it would create a red tape and accounting problem when assuming the district gets rid of that. As everyone knows, I'm an attorney for cities. I have clients that formed and assumed transportation benefit districts and never funded them. So just the forming and the assumption does not necessarily result in a new tax. There is nothing in the assumption that would require us to levy a tax, correct?
That is correct.
And there is nothing in the assumption that would say... And there is nothing in the assumption that would say, you know, that we would, you know, that we couldn't send something to voter, or should we in the future want to levy a tax? That's correct.
That is also correct.
So to me, this is just a matter of, you know, we, you know, finishing the job of setting up the district. The assumption is not the issue. And if this council wants to have discussions in the future about transportation priorities, putting guardrails on what might be funded, to send something to the voters for the TBD or doing something councilmanically, it's going to be a whole lot easier, cheaper, and be able to be done much more efficiently if we assume the district. So I just, the public needs to understand, the assumption of the district is not a tax. It's just completing the process so that we don't need to set up a whole new shadow government, basically, not shadow government, but separate governmental organization to do the work if we want to consider sending something to the voters, doing something councilmanically in the future. And I think that it would be a lot more efficient and cost-effective to assume the district. And then later on, if we want to talk about funding, we can talk about funding. That's not something that my mind is made up on. I don't think any council member sitting up here has made a decision fully on what to fund or how to fund it, or what the amount to fund it, or whether to send it to the voters or not. I personally would support if the council does down the road set up funding under the TBD, putting some guardrails and types of things that are done with it. I, you know, but that's not what, where we are tonight. Right now, we are at, do we finish the work of setting up the district so that we don't have to create a whole new staffing and accounting problem and meeting logistical problem if we want to ever discuss this in the future? So I'm in favor of moving forward with the assumption and having, and I appreciate all the public's comments. I think that we will, I will personally, and I know my colleagues, will take those into consideration before we ever take another step. But all this does is complete the process of creating, of creating the district and making it manageable to manage. So that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Would we, would we be paid more as commissioners or councilmembers? I'm just curious. So.
That's the going rate.
Yeah. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments so far from my colleagues. And I really want to thank the residents for their time and their energy to send the emails and calls and for being here this evening and sharing your concerns. You know, I hear you in regards to, you know, how expensive it is to be in Bellevue. I hear the, almost every day, the higher cost of living that almost everybody is impacted by. I hear all the time about the heavy tax burden that we all experience, especially those with families. You know, it doesn't really matter if it's for 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 housing or groceries or gas. It is expensive to 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 live here. And I don't think any of us, you know, is looking at this TBD lightly. I think we all understand how how expensive it 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 truly is. You know, having said that, I think we've, you know, we've we've paused this 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 maintenance, this maintenance, and and constantly improving our infrastructure, I think is important to all of us. We've seen the benefits to it. On the other hand, what I think, what I've heard from 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 residents time and time again during this whole process is, yes, it's a priority, but yes, they also want to understand the ramifications of it. I think that, as former councilmember put it, we are to a degree putting the cart before the horse. I think as a city, I think as a council, we need to make a stronger case for this still. I think where I'm at right now is I'd like to see us go through the mid-buy process first and make sure that there are not other policies or processes we can put in place or other unexpected money that'll be coming into the city. As as multiple folks have mentioned tonight, we are seeing some some dramatic revenue come into the city. And and we do have priorities. And where does the priorities of maintenance sit? Well, it's usually at the top of the list, so obviously, we're putting money towards that already. I think we still need to do a better job in terms of 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 outreach. I I'm thrilled with what we have done to date. I just don't think we're done yet. I think we, again, I think we just really make, need to make a stronger case to the residents of Bellevue that this is 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 needed. And I think we need to take a stronger look during that mid-buy process to see if there is other funds available. And I think we need to be more specific in terms of the projects that it'll go to. As you've heard multiple times tonight, you know, there's no sunset clause. Well, okay, maybe we should take a look at that. Maybe we should update that survey. Clearly, there's a little bit of confusion there on 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 that survey. So I'd like to see that updated a little bit and have it run a little bit longer, too. Hearing from 100 folks is great, but we're also hearing that we haven't touched a lot of folks as well in in terms of informing them about why we're looking at this and 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 the importance of it. So so for me, at this point right now, while I while I still like to continue the outreach process and continue to look at this, for right now, though, I would like to pause on this. I don't really see a reason to rush this. Let's pause. Let's keep doing our homework. Let's keep educating residents about what this benefit district is, why we're looking at it, what the benefits could be. Let's also keep looking at what we're looking at during the mid-buy process, and then let's come back and then reexamine this, and then we can assume the the district at that point. We have a clear path to how much we're going to raise, what we're going to put it towards, and then how long this benefit district will last. I think these are all the questions that we need to, we need to answer first before putting that additional burden on the residents and the families of this city. So that's kind of where I stand right now. Thank you.
So I want to thank the public for all the comments and the input and feedback that we've received. It's been really helpful and informative. And there's definitely a conversation to be had, which we have not had yet, about whether we want to even use this tool, how we would use it, what we would use it for, the limitations on it, all that. I want to have that conversation. I don't feel that we can have it as easily if we form a district as opposed to passing this and enabling us as a council to have that discussion. I think it's more cost-effective for us to do it as a council instead of commissioners. So we've already formed the district, but how we operate within it is what we're talking about tonight. So I I am more eager, I guess, than I heard the deputy mayor, to go ahead and put this through that when we talk about this, we can do it as council members, that we can have staff, and that we don't have to put a whole bunch more money into forming a separate body of commissioners and treat it as something outside of the city council. So that's where I'm right now, but I'm also listening to everybody. So Councilmember Stokes?
Yeah, I think this is, this has been a good conversation. One thing that that bothers me is that unfortunately, I think we we got in these conversations, people going off different tracks, and there are a lot of things that were unfortunately brought up that aren't really related to, that aren't real with this, what we're talking about. So it's several steps, but the the questions people have raised and want to look at things differently is is good. So I I agree with the with the mayor. I think it's it's something that has been used in a number of places that works, that has a lot of benefits to it. We can have, discuss that, and I don't think it'll help a lot to ask the the staff to tell us again why this is a good thing to do. We've already decided we want to do this, but how we do it and put it in place is is comes up to it. And we're not, the discussion, it's it's kind of difficult to have a discussion about what could you do with it and what might be in that, because you need to have that to understand why would we want to put one together. And then if people, if you don't have the good communications and then they come back and think that we've already made these decisions and we're doing something bad, then that gets it difficult to have a discussion and go forward in something positive. I, what we've heard, and it'd be nice to get out with the public and and talk about this again, is why have a, you know, a Transportation Benefit District? What does it do for us that we can't do now in a way? What's what's the reality of that? We've gone through that, and it it has very positive parts to it. But I think that's something we need to talk about going forward. But I agree with, we've already, we already have it. And it is absolutely essential to have us do it with a council and not a separate body. So let's put that in place. It's not going to do anything, it's not going to cost anything. We're not going to make decisions without going through these, and how we make those decisions is is before us. And as somebody, you know, we've we've talked about it, and Councilmember Robertson said, you know, we don't, we can actually still send it out to the public for a vote. So it's not, we're not putting it in a in a box. It's going to be something that is difficult for the public to work with. So the conversation's been good. And but I think the decision tonight, and and we got way off track on this, but it helps us get some some perspective, is, all right, we've, let's assume the, you know, assume the 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 leadership of it and and put it in that place. And then, and as the deputy mayor said, we've got a lot of things to discuss. Either way, we're not going to take action tomorrow on this. And we're going to have a lot, a lot of things to do and explaining. Part of it is explaining why we need the, for the maintenance pieces, what happened. That wasn't just because, you know, we just put money someplace else. We had to do something in the pandemic. So there are a lot of these pieces in there. So I think we we have, let's put it in place, and then let's talk with the public and really have a conversation, knowing that this is what we're, it's here. And if we don't want to do anything down the future, we don't have to. But I don't, I don't think we should drag it out. We we already have it now. Let's just go ahead with that. We assume it. But that doesn't mean we're going to put taxes out there without anybody hearing about it or anything else. It it's just, it's frustrating to have people think that we're doing something that's not, you know, the best way to do things. But it's good to hear people's concerns. So I think this has been a good conversation, and let's go ahead and and assume this, put it in place so the council and the city and and the public have more control over this than if we were a separate body.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Former colleague, Councilmember, former Councilmember Kevin Walters stole what I was going to say. Putting cart in front of the horse. I agree with you 100%. But I do disagree with him when he said that when he got on the council, they stopped the property tax increase. We did it years ahead of you, when Ron Smith, Don Davidson, and myself, and Georgia Zomdiak, we said, hey, we do not collect money we don't need to spend, right? And we prioritize. We know what we're going to spend on. As a result, most of you know, I've never voted on the 1% property tax increase because it does not have any specific destination where the money goes. I'm very happy when we talk about TBD. I have some questions, but I went along with it because it is important. Transportation is one of the most important things we face. Okay, but after thinking about it, after a few conversations, and I appreciate the public saying what they're telling us, you know, we don't have any specific money where it goes. And I was reminded the money goes to maintenance. Absolutely correct. You know, we got to figure out how to pay for the maintenance. We we don't, if we don't have it, we should talk about in the budget. We need to. And we got to find the time to do it. It's important enough we spend the time to make it happen. You know, so it's important. So we need to have transparency, and I believe it's something we need to discuss. And I don't agree we should do it now, because needs may change. Priorities will change. And so we cannot talk about what we want to spend now and figuring out when the time comes we do it. It doesn't work. We have to require discussion with the community so that we have transparency, that we can talk to them, and we know what is needed. Then we can decide as a transparent package of budget discussion. I always believe in prioritization. That's important also. We hear that. We talk about all that stuff. But how come we don't do it? We say, well, let's do it next time. When is the next time? It's got to be now. Let's do it. Put money where mouth is. Do it. And I also don't want to make it too easy, because it's easy to get money in our hands. It's very easy. It's easy to spend it.
You know, that's another conversation that's coming up.
I know that.
And I'm looking forward to having it with you.
Exactly. I just want to bring it up. She agree with me. Excellent. So I believe that, after listening to the public, I think they agree with us, and I think we heard them. Thank you. We need to be addressing the 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 needs, and Kevin Walters said the same thing again. We need to have a plan. We need to have a plan so that we know what's we're going to do, right? That's what the public's asking.
Thank you.
I think I've said all I've said. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your input. We appreciate it. I'm going to ask for the motion from Deputy Mayor.
Senator Mayor. I move to direct staff to finalize the associated ordinance for the final adoption at a future meeting.
Second.
And this would give us the opportunity to have a conversation about everything we've all talked about and heard about in our concerns as a council, as opposed to as a commission, a separate commission with commissioners. Correct? I mean, it would be a commission, but we would be talking about as council members and not as commissioners.
Madam Mayor, this decision is as a council.
Yes.
So if you take, yes, if we bring it back, it's as a council, not as a district.
Correct.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, so we have made the motion.
May I ask a question, clarification? We're not going to assume that the district, we're not going to be working as.
We've already done that.
Yes, we have, but we have not authorized it, right?
We have created a district. This is how the district would function.
We'll continue.
We haven't made any decisions as to what to do with the district.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And this is not a decision on what to do with the district, what the district will do?
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor, oh, go ahead.
Do we have a chance to ask any more questions?
Sure. Not really, but if you have a question, go ahead.
Well, I do, because as I'm listening, I I just want to make sure that I'm really clear, because when I asked my question, what I heard is, we can have the conversation about the mid-buy, the revenue, where we are, and whether within the priorities that we have, there is a necessity to actually leverage the Transportation Benefit District. Is that correct? Because then, and and let me just finish my question. Because then, as we were talking, what I heard is, well, no, there's this, there's administrative efficiency and whatnot. But isn't it true that that we can have all the conversation about the mid-buy, the revenue, where we're at, and priorities as a council? And finish that discussion before we talk about a Transportation Benefit District and the need for that, or what kind of funding, or what kind of projects? Is is that correct? Because I think that's, that's the piece we're trying to vote for, is the, is this something we have to actually vote on tonight? Or isn't there an opportunity for us to do some of this work we know is coming in the mid-buy that's?
Councilmembers on, can I rephrase it just a little bit? And you can tell me if it characterizes what you're trying to ask. What is the benefit of voting for this tonight as, in terms of all those discussions that she just mentioned?
The benefit of doing it tonight versus other is, it actually eases the administration. We can, the conversations can take place and should take place as a city about what the city's needs are. But the question as to funding options has to be separated out in a different type of conversation. It's possible to do. It's adds some complexity. It does add some challenges. On our end, not that we should be a driver in this conversation, does require us to do some separate accounting and some other things to make sure that we have done things appropriate from an administration standpoint. But the benefit is the cleanliness and the transparency of the process.
Well, Councilmembers on, does that answer your question? Can we call on?
Yes and no. I mean, I I hear you that it there's, it's cleaner. But we've clearly heard that there's a lot we don't completely understand about whether we would even reach into that bucket in the first place. And I guess I'm just trying to understand what the urgency of tonight versus at least even having one budget discussion about revenues and where we're at so we can even have a better picture. So that's where I'm struggling. Thanks.
Just, Councilmember Barxdale?
Consistent with the points that have been made in support of moving forward, I I feel like pausing it would be inconsistent, actually, with public comment, for most public comment. You want us to be able to talk about taxation, right? And make those decisions around how we or if we generate revenue. And this has no negative impact, from what I can tell, on the community. So there's the benefit of easing administration, because you've got the. So there's the benefit of easing administration because you've got the, the separation of direction in terms of the next step. And if we don't make that assumption, then you have to figure out what funding requirements would be necessary if we didn't assume the district. So I see benefits only in moving forward with this. We have the discussion about taxation when we're supposed to have that next.
I, I agree with you. Councilmember Stokes.
The only decision is, do we continue to, do we have, who's in the role we play? And I think what we're seeing is what, what the reality is, it's better if the council handles it, and we're assuming it. We don't, and, and we act as a council. And we can do all those other things, and we, we clearly will look at whether we can have a, you know, go out to the public and all those things. The other one is a little bit tighter and a little bit by itself. It just creates a different atmosphere in terms of, we've assumed it, but, but we have it in place, and if we use that. So this seems to me just a, when it comes down to it, it's the, not a difficult question on this because we're not making any decisions on any funding or anything else at this point. It's just the structure and having the council being the district and control it and work on it and do act as a regular council. But this helps us make, because there are benefits to having it. That's a long discussion, but there are benefits.
Okay. Maybe we could call for the vote.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, so four, three. Is that what I heard? Okay, thank you. We have a study session item. Mr. Miyaki, would you like to present? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. You have one study session topic on your agenda this evening, and that is an informational update on the city's environmental stewardship initiative. It's our quarterly report. Joining us this evening is Michael Cotterman, the director, Emile King, planning director, Jennifer Ewing, sustainability manager, as well as Anna Hagerup, sustainability portfolio manager. And with that, I'm going to, is Michael here? Jennifer? Oh, Jennifer. Oh, okay. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it to you, Jennifer.
Sorry, last minute change there. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and members of the council. We're excited to present to you tonight our third quarterly update. We'll be providing some highlights on our work and introducing you to some of our new team members from the environmental stewardship team. Thank you to the team who are sitting over here. I'll introduce them in a minute. Thanks to everyone for sticking around. So tonight's presentation is for information only. No action or direction is being requested. Like I said, we'll go over, introduce the new staff, talk about some highlights of our plan implementation progress, and then talk a bit about what is coming up next. So in the, the last budget, the council added some additional funds to help accelerate the plan implementation. This was building on some budget we already had, so we decided to use that funding to really increase our staffing capacity. This is our organizational chart. The positions in yellow are all in the community development department, and then we've always worked really closely with finance and asset management. So we added some new positions in community development, and then also one new position in finance and asset management to work with Anna on our municipal operations, sustainability efforts. So you've met Anna and I. I don't know that you've ever been sort of formally introduced to Christine Jenkins, who's our AmeriCorps urban forestry specialist. She has been leading our tree giveaway planning for this year, our tree ambassador program, and some other outreach and education efforts. And then some of the other folks who are here tonight, almost the whole team, we have one more person starting in a couple weeks. We have Justice Stewart. He's our new sustainability program manager. He's going to be, he's been working on the climate vulnerability assessment, getting the Wilburton Sustainable District Opportunity Assessment going, and also being the lead for some of the environmental and sustainability aspects of the comprehensive plan update. I'll talk a little bit more about some of the other projects that I mentioned there. Sophia Fall is our new sustainability coordinator. She's leading the Bellevue Climate Challenge and providing overall support for outreach and engagement for our sustainability efforts, and also working with Anna on updating the greenhouse gas emissions inventory and the wedge analysis. Let's say I mentioned Christine. And then Colin Munson is our new climate and electric mobility coordinator. He was previously an intern in the transportation department, working with our transportation demand management team. He is our new all things electric vehicle person. So he's going to be working on really supporting our entire community in transitioning to electric vehicles, and in particular, you know, looking at opportunities for EV charging infrastructure, really looking at where the market is now and where's most effective for us to direct city investment. And also, there's a lot of grant funding coming available for EV charging infrastructure, so helping to prepare us for that. And then finally, you know, Anna, she's leading a lot of the work for our city operations for both making our facilities more energy efficient and then also helping to get all the infrastructure in place for greening the fleet. And then Allison Lamerts is our new sustainability capital projects coordinator, so part of the team and fam that does a variety of different capital projects. But Allison's focus will be mostly on more sustainability oriented projects for city facilities. So super excited to have the team on board. The final position, the climate and energy program manager, that person, Pat Bevett, he's starting in a couple weeks, and he'll be leading our clean buildings incentive program, which is our commercial building program. And, oh, I just realized, apologies, Sarah. I skipped over you. Sorry about that. Sarah Phillips is our Energy Smart Eastside Program Manager. She just started two weeks ago. So she's going to be leading our five city heat pump program. So this position's a little unique in that it's jointly funded by Bellevue, Redmond, Kirkland, Issaquah, and Mercer Island. So Sarah's a Bellevue employee, but really working with all five of our cities to help kind of take our, our program from more kind of pilot phase and, and scale it and, and make it much bigger so we can continue to have an impact in the community. I think I got everyone there. Sorry about that. So shifting gears to talk about the plan implementation progress. We've, you know, clearly been busy with hiring over the past several months or since the beginning of the year. Just over the past quarter, we've really focused on advancing the projects and efforts we had already started. So we haven't started any new actions. We'll talk a bit more about some of the areas where we have made progress over the past month. I guess in preparing for tonight, I was, you know, just reminded that we're, I think, really at the halfway point of our five-year plan. And we have started or incorporated into existing operations about almost 80% of the actions. So, you know, considering we're about half of the way through, we're really just kind of bringing on some new staff members. Few people, you know, really getting onboarded now. Couple others have been on a, a little bit longer, but, you know, not quite fully up to steam yet. I think really making good progress. And in terms of the actions that haven't been initiated, really, once we, we have everybody in place, onboard, we will work kind of within our team and with the other departments to kind of revisit the, the timing, the timelines and work plans for the, the remaining actions. So to go through some highlights on some of our community programs, and then Anna will talk about some of our municipal operations work. The Energy Smart Eastside Program, this is the program that Sarah is going to lead. We launched this last year more in pilot mode. Since then, we have received a couple of grants through the Department of Commerce. And so we're really in the phase right now of, you know, getting a lot of our processes and systems in place to allow us to, to scale the program. Also, during the time since we launched the program, there's been new incentives from, or new tax credits from the federal government, some new incentives from PSE. So that this, I think we're finding that there's certainly a lot of need for support to help residents install energy efficient heat pumps, and, and also we're getting a better understanding for the market. So our first phase of the program has been fully subscribed to support low income residents in installing energy efficient heat pumps. So we're, we're working through, working with these households to help get them through the process. We have just recently launched our incentives for moderate income households. So that's a $2,000 incentive for households in the 80 to 150% AMI range. So just starting to get that off the ground. And then the photo there is of the Imagine Housing Andrews Heights property. So through this program, we also have a, a partnership with the King County Housing Authority Weatherization Program. So we really help to connect the KCHA weatherization program with Imagine Housing, and KCHA is funding the retrofits and installation of heat pumps and other energy efficiency measures in Andrews Heights and three other Imagine Housing properties, one in Redmond, Kirkland, and Issaquah. So excited to sort of get started with that partnership and, and, and for the potential where it could go, since we have quite a few affordable housing properties in, in all five of our cities that could really benefit from, from weatherization. With the Clean Buildings Incentive Program, this is our program for commercial buildings to help them comply with the Washington State Clean Buildings Act. We're making good progress in getting buildings into the program or through our contract and partnership with McDonald Miller. We're providing complimentary services to buildings to benchmark their energy use so they can understand where they're at and if they are in compliance with the state law or if they have to do some work. We had an initial goal of helping 10 properties apply for early adopter incentives. So that's a, a pot of funding that the state set aside for buildings that, you know, are kind of further away from their compliance, their energy efficiency target. And we, we've exceeded that goal. We're working, I think, with 12 or 13 buildings right now, which we're excited about. As Pat comes onboard, he's going to help just bring more properties into the program and also, you know, continue to provide more of an equity lens so we can make sure we're working with properties in Bellevue that are, are most in need of support, and also really trying to support nonprofit buildings and, and other types of properties serving our diverse community. Finally, we have an event coming up at the end of the month that's co-organized by the Eastside Cities, Puget Sound Energy, and McDonald Miller to educate property owners and, and property managers about the Clean Buildings Act and what our various programs can do to, to support them. And then finally, the Bellevue 2030 District, that was launched in, in June. That, that is a sort of a public-private partnership to support also commercial buildings and sustainability, energy efficiency, various things. So that was launched in June, really well received by the business community and our property managers and, and building owners in Bellevue. And they're also one of the supporters of our event at the end of the month. In terms of other sustainability programming and projects, we are putting the finishing touches on a climate vulnerability assessment. This was one of the actions in the environmental stewardship plan. Also, a step that is required in the more recently passed HB 1181. So this is a, a scan of the various kind of potential impacts of climate change in Bellevue and where, where, you know, some of the impacts might be felt the greatest and what are some of the strategies we can take to help improve our resiliency. We'll be incorporating some of the key takeaways from that into the comprehensive plan update in terms of policies around climate resiliency, and then also working across departments to develop a plan for how we can really take the next step and, you know, make sure that we are looking across our, our people, our buildings, our systems, our natural environment to help increase resiliency from climate change. The Tree Code update is underway. That was last before council on June 26, and there was a public information session back on June 8. Since then, the team has brought on a technical consultant to really help dive into the details of the code, look at best practices from around the region, and develop some recommendations for code updates. I don't know if there's a date scheduled yet for when that's coming back to council, so apologies for that. And then finally, the tree giveaway. This will be our third annual tree giveaway. We've received, I think, over 700 applications for about 800 trees from, primarily from residents, but also from some community organizations, a few KCHA properties in Bellevue, so a handful of schools and nonprofits. So Christine has the, the task of kind of assigning trees to people and using the tree equity score tool to really prioritize who gets, who gets what tree and how, how are we making sure the trees are going to the, the properties that are most in need of, of more trees. So let's see, with that, I will hand it over to Anna to talk through the updates on our city operations work.
Thank you, Jennifer, and councilmembers, Deputy Mayor and Mayor Robinson, for having us tonight. I'm excited to report on our city hall operation, or sorry, our sustainability and municipal operations. We continue to focus on building energy efficiency and fleet electrification as those are our two largest sectors of greenhouse gas emissions. We're focused, focused on our largest buildings being Bellevue Service Center and City Hall, looking at how we can improve energy efficiency at that building, building decarbonization as well as adding solar. A lot of this is related to the added electrical load that's required for fleet infrastructure if we're electrifying the fleet. So we are trying to offset that with the grant opportunities that are coming available that connects solar to EV. We're evaluating those opportunities and looking at this building holistically, holistically to make sure that we're making some very efficient decisions with how we're operating that building. We're very excited because this does not only reduce greenhouse gas emissions, but also generates operational savings for buildings. For City Hall, I'm happy to report that we are compliant with our energy efficiency targets and the Washington State Clean Building Standard. We are still looking at opportunities to partner with PSE and community solar programs to still support local renewable energy in the Bellevue community, although we do still have to go through the compliance process for City Hall. We will be starting our fleet electrification analysis at City Hall. City Hall houses a lot of our light duty fleets, and we need to support additional infrastructure here so that we can support the adoption of electric vehicles at the department level. So those are two big focuses for us at City Hall and Bellevue Service Center for this next year. We continue to implement ongoing operational savings through lighting projects as well as building insulation projects as well. We're still pursuing green building certification programs at Fire Station Five and Ten, and also looking at the infrastructure required for the electric fire engine that we received a grant for. All of these projects are ongoing. We have been working with Parks Department as well to help them prepare for compliance with the Clean Buildings Act as well. So we are looking at those partnerships and how to efficiently plan and get ahead of those compliance reporting periods. And I think that is all I have. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. So yeah, just in terms of new initiatives, so the, the new staff we've brought onboard will help not only kind of scale up some of the existing work we started. We are launching a few new initiatives with our, our new staff. So one of the kind of most exciting ones is the Wilburton Sustainable District Opportunity Assessment. So as we've been going through the implementation of the Wilburton vision, you know, there's obviously quite a few already, really exciting transit oriented development, walkability, bike infrastructure projects underway. And there's really been kind of an, an emergence of more opportunities to really kind of further enhance the sustainability of the neighborhood. So this project will really be happening kind of in parallel to the Wilburton policy and code work to look at, how could we, you know, work with the stakeholders, see what the opportunities might be to really further some of these sustainability ideas that have come up kind of through the planning process, such as district energy, green building, you know, renewable energy, low impact development, et cetera. So this project will really kind of build on some of the visioning that's already happened. And there's different examples and, and frameworks for sustainable districts, so we're going to look at some of those different ways to potentially approach this for Wilburton. There's, you know, how there's lead for green building. There's a similar program for neighborhoods. There's a similar program for neighborhoods. That's one potential. There's another kind of framework called Eco Districts that provides a bit of a structure for neighborhoods that want to really kind of implement citywide sustainability goals at the neighborhood level. So Justice is going to be leading that work, working closely with our strategic planning group and working on this also in conjunction with the planning team working on the Wilburton Policy Code and Urban Design Guidelines. The electric vehicle roadmap, this is kind of a fancy term for our electric vehicle plan, but to really help us identify where in the city could we use additional electric vehicle charging infrastructure? Where are some of the gaps and some of the barriers to our residents going out and buying electric vehicles? I think, you know, a lot of the challenges are obviously around, you know, some of the costs, but also the charging constraints. Most people like to charge their vehicles either at home or at work. We have a large and growing population in multifamily buildings in Bellevue, so how might we best support some of those residents? This is, you know, potentially through partnerships with private companies that are providing EV charging infrastructure grants, working with PSE to help them direct some of their investments strategically in Bellevue. So we're excited for this effort. We think this will really help prepare us for some of the grant funding that's coming next year, both from the state and the federal government. We've heard from funders in the past that they often like to see cities with this sort of plan, so Colin's going to be leading that work. And at the same time, continuing to track all of the different funding opportunities. So yeah, one of the other really kind of ongoing bodies of work, but we definitely have much more capacity for it now, and there's also a huge influx of funding, especially from the federal government around grants. So with our additional staff capacity, we are, you know, especially over the next year or two, going to be focused on acquiring more grant funding to support a number of the different projects we've mentioned, both for capital projects, but also for some of our programming, like the Energy Smart Eastside Program. So yeah, to begin to wrap things up, just in terms of next steps, we do have a few different reports and studies coming out over the next few months. The Climate Vulnerability Assessment will be complete at the end of this month. The Tree Canopy Assessment is a little bit delayed. Our consultant is working on it though, and we are hoping to have that hopefully also released by the end of this month. The greenhouse gas emissions inventory, we're doing a slightly different approach to that this year, working with the other Eastside Cities and a consultant to make sure all of our methods are standardized and consistent. That will be ready at the end of this year, so at our fourth quarterly update to council, we'll come back with that update. So that's for the 2022 greenhouse gas emissions. So those are some of the kind of three big reports. The Tree Canopy, or the Tree Giveaway is coming up in about a month and a half. And then we have a couple other events, the Clean Buildings Symposium at the end of September. And then we'll be looking at doing a town hall for our residents around the end of the year, but we haven't set a date yet. Yeah, so that, again, just to recap, this was for information only. No direction or action is being requested. And yeah, we have time for some questions. Thanks.
Great, great presentation. Thank you. Anybody have any comments or questions? Councilmembers on?
Yes. Well, thank you, first of all. So, so excited to have six new staff. I mean, truly believe that you're a force multiplier to launch us even more into getting to 50% reduction by 2030. So really excited with all the work that you're doing, you know, seeing the Bellevue 2030, working with property owners, which was a sticky point of how to get at that, the Wilburton Sustainable District, and getting to the neighborhood level. So excited to see Justice's work there. And the weatherization, because we've heard about rents going up, so if we can reduce energy costs for our community, that's going to be really important. I am curious about what level of, so I'm just going to throw my questions out there and you can answer or get back to me. The access to federal grant funding from the Inflation Reduction Act, really want to get a better understanding of that and some of the tax credits that are associated with it and what we might be able to do associated with that. On the items that were not started yet, I saw that some of them were EV readiness, so seems like maybe that one we actually are starting on with Colin. And I know that King County Metro, they just had a presentation to the tri-transportation boards about some of the work that they're doing and to the degree we can collaborate on their EV infrastructure. On the community solar, I'm wondering for Genesee whether we can do something related to community solar. It sounds like there might be a bill that's sitting in the legislature that we might be able to advocate for that helps us with community solar. So even though it's in the not yet started, I just wonder if there's something we can do there. The wedge analysis, I just want to confirm, because what I heard with PSRC is that they're actually trying to consolidate the calculations. So when you said that about the Eastside Cities, I think that probably means that we're doing that more consolidated together as part of PSRC. And then lastly, they also talked about an expert review panel that's going to, that they convened over the next couple of months as part of PSRC for their climate work program, and that they were going to be coming up with some discussions and perhaps recommendations in Q4 and Q1. So just want to make sure we're tied into that so that whatever they're doing, we can be jointly doing advocacy and each carrying more water for each other, because I'm super excited about all the work we're doing with the 78 actions, but there still are a number of them that we haven't started. And I just have a belief that going from three staff to nine, that we're just going to be a force to be reckoned with to really get at that climate action. So super excited for your work and thank you so much for making progress. So I did have a couple of questions embedded in there.
Okay. I tried to capture them. So let's see, with the IRA tax credits, that is something, so that's the Inflation Reduction Act tax credits related to energy efficiency. We are trying to promote those through the Energy Smart Eastside Program. I think, you know, we can, I think there's probably opportunity to do a little more around that. There also have been some new interpretations on the tax credits and how they may actually apply to local governments and nonprofits. So there's a little more work we can do there to make sure we're kind of taking advantage of everything for ourselves and for nonprofits in the community and also for our residents. But that, yeah, that's definitely something that as part of Energy Smart Eastside, we are promoting as a benefit. For some of the not started actions, yeah, some of those are a little bit of a gray area where, you know, we have maybe done a little work, but we haven't launched like an official project yet. So I think we'll probably have more to report on those, you know, at the next council update. We can definitely follow up with Genesee and the intergovernment relations on the community solar bill. I'm not totally remembering the specifics of that from the last session, but yeah, we can definitely look into that. With the wedge analysis work, we're, that's all, do you want to speak to that one?
Sure, yeah, we absolutely work with them. We also coordinated our contacts with the consultants, so we're all working together. We're trying to streamline it so that we're all on the same page in terms of our methodology. So it's very consistent with what King County has done and what we're rolling out across the five cities. And yes, PSRC is one of our source status, so we have to work very closely with them. But I appreciate you also bringing that up, that they have this, the commission meeting that you mentioned.
Mm-hmm. But I think the tool we're using is based on work our consultant did for PSRC, I think, last year or the year before. So we're just getting a more kind of updated and Bellevue-specific version of it. Yeah. And then the expert panel for the climate work with PSRC, we definitely are, you know, staffing those various commissions and within the city, kind of working across departments and staff. When the PSRC has definitely been taking up more climate-related topics, so we're definitely plugged into that, but we'll just circle back on that one, make sure we didn't miss anything.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Well, thank you. Great presentation again. I always appreciate these updates coming to us and always very timely as we keep moving this initiative forward. I really just have one quick question. Oh, and welcome, staff, welcome aboard. Is, we've done somewhat of a tree canopy assessment, meaning that we know the neighborhoods that have less of a tree canopy than others. You had mentioned that you kind of do a rating or you prioritize those. So my question to you is, can we emphasize additional outreach to those neighborhoods that have a stronger need for more trees right now versus waiting for those applications to come in? Can we do some outreach and say, hey, you know, this neighborhood has been identified as having a lower tree canopy than most other neighborhoods in our city. Would you be interested in a tree giveaway? How can we help facilitate that? Are we doing anything like that right now? If not, can we?
Yes, yeah, we are. We have tried to do some tabling, you know, in particular in the neighborhoods that have lower tree canopy. Some of our online outreach has really been through social media. You can kind of target more zip codes and that sort of thing. So we've done that. We've also had our materials translated and are working with our cultural outreach assistants to do more in-language outreach and engagement. Is there anything else I'm forgetting?
Uh, yeah, that's.
Okay, yeah, so in general, yeah, we have been trying to target those neighborhoods that have a lower tree canopy to really encourage those residents to apply.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, to riff off of that. I was going to ask, this is related to, where are we on the tree code itself? You know, what people can cut down on and all that? I know we're making progress. Where are we now?
Yeah, right now, the Development Services Team is in the process of really reviewing the existing code, looking at codes from neighboring cities and best practices and, you know, starting to kind of prepare some recommendations for potential updates.
Okay. Yeah, because that'll help a lot in terms of dealing with the keeping the old trees here and the ones that are viable. Yeah, so that's great. The other thing is, you mentioned that about the fire department, and it's really exciting to have a first real electric fire truck. And hopefully we'll get more of those in the future, but that's a big step forward. Really excited about that. And the other one, you're starting to do work, and this is going to be really helpful, that we're doing this work in a new area that we're working on, well, we've been working on for 10 years and getting ready for Wilburton. But the Wilburton Sustainability District Opportunity is really great, and that's something we, again, I think we really haven't done that in development of other areas in the past. This always comes behind, so it's really good pushing this as part of it going forward. How's that going so far and what, you know, and obviously come back to us and when you can help on some things on that, but how do you think that's going so far?
Yeah, I'd say we're kind of just getting started on the more kind of official part of that work. I'd say we've been kind of doing some, a lot of pre-work leading up to it to understand what the opportunities are. Some of the workshops we had as a follow-up from the IC sustain trip to Denmark really kind of helped pave the way for this work, but now this is kind of the more sort of formal project where we'll be looking at really kind of developing some of these ideas further. So, so far, so good. We are bringing on a consultant to help us with this work and really kind of incorporate some of these ideas into more of like the code and the urban design guidelines and that sort of thing as we go through that process.
Are you in conference?
I'm going to let somebody else talk for a minute, I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Let me just, I'll call on you a second. I think we all want to know, how likely are we to reach our 2030 climate goals by 2030?
Well, I think we'll see where the new tree canopy, or the new updated greenhouse gas emissions inventory is. I think to a certain extent, you know, we're almost at a sort of re-establishing a baseline where we're at now coming out of COVID. I think 2022 will have been sort of the kind of new normal, if you will. So I think we'll see where we're at in terms of our emissions. And I think now, you know, starting now, we really have this solid foundation as a city to move forward more aggressively. I think a lot of, you know, so in terms of achieving our 2030 goals, some of that will be dependent on state legislation being fully enacted. So the Clean Energy Transformation Act that will require utilities to transition to 100% renewable energy, that's obviously a critical one that impacts our success. So we're, you know, paying attention to that. Some of the other state legislation has an impact, and then, of course, the work we do through our programs as well. So.
That's the part we're interested in.
Yeah. So I think through our programs, we definitely are, as we bring on the new staff, we will be looking at, okay, what do we need to do to get from where we are now to 2030 to achieve our goals? So the wedge analysis will definitely help inform that as we update that data.
Okay, looking forward to it. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Two questions. I see in your presentation, you show a lot of electric charging stations. So what are we doing to move forward, you know, on the city's use of electric vehicle? And maybe in general, what's the application, you know, of the autonomous vehicle? First question. Second question is, what are we doing to further expand the use of solar at our city facilities? Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, great question. For the fleet electrification component, we are focused on getting renewable energy to our buildings through solar. So we are looking at solar, expanding the solar that exists at Bellevue Service Center as well as opportunities for solar at City Hall. So there are new grants that are coming available, or one was just released today, actually. So looking at those opportunities and those grant requirements to see how we can back into that is something that we, of course, evaluate every time a grant comes available. We need more electrical capacity at both of our largest facilities. City Hall houses our largest light duty fleet vehicle, so we need to have additional electrical capacity before we can start purchasing the electrical vehicles. So right now, we're in the phase of taking a look holistically at how we can provide that electrical infrastructure to the buildings so that we have the opportunity to purchase electric vehicles. There, but with the grants that have come available and those opportunities to partner with public charging facilities and other opportunities with PSE as they roll out their incentive programs, we're in touch with them and looking at the most effective way to move forward, especially with a market that is changing very quickly in terms of the technology. So we want to be very confident about the technology that we're installing and how we're going about this. So we have hired a consultant and we're working with them to evaluate both of our largest facilities. And then we also want to roll it out at our smaller facilities as well. Also, it requires an engineering analysis of those facilities to understand what their electrical capacity is. So we're in that audit phase where we need to better understand what the gap is between what the existing infrastructure can offer and what we need in terms of fleet. We do have the green fleet strategy that we completed last year, and that has been helpful in terms of guiding our decision-making process from, that involves stakeholder engagement internally, and now we're able to roll that out and still vetting those options.
Follow-up question on the grants you talk about, you know? Without money, can't do very much. So could you elaborate a little bit where these are grants coming from? You mentioned PSE, that's good, but what else are we looking at? Are we going to have the ability to fund these projects?
The, as mentioned earlier, the Inflation Reduction Act is a federal grant, so they're rolling out programs for building electrification and EV support. The Washington Department of Commerce, Washington State Department of Commerce is the one that released a $64 million grant today for DC fast charging as well as Level 2 charging. We're also looking at enrolling all of our city-owned charging stations in the Clean Fuel Standard Program, which offers an incentive, a credit per se, for the amount of kilowatt-hours used in any vehicle. So we get a reimbursement for deploying that electricity. So we, we get a reimbursement for deploying that electricity in the community as well as in our fleets and employee charging. So we're looking at all the opportunities to generate revenue, leverage existing grants, partner with the community.
You should be working very closely with Genesee, right, to get at least half of that $60 million. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Breckstiel.
Just a really quick, thank, first, thank you for the update, welcome to the new hires. In terms of, the earlier question about broader outreach to the community, I think I may have raised before in terms, and, sorry, I'm putting my tech hat on. In terms of a way to keep it top of mind, and I, I'm going to say an app or through the Bellevue, My Bellevue app, but the bigger point here, I think, is how do we keep it top of mind for community members? Like, as somebody is thinking about what, what kind of car they're going to get, or whether they're going to replace their roof, or like want to do solar, like, how do we get in before they make those decisions, by keeping them aware proactively? So question about that.
Yeah, I think just kind of more generally with our outreach, now that we do have more capacity to kind of do kind of more sustained outreach to the community around climate and sustainability issues, not just, you know, project-specific. Sophia is putting together a survey for our residents to kind of just gather more information around people's interests, kind of how, what engagement is working, you know, which ways people prefer to learn about different things and engage with us. So I, I think we are really looking at more strategically, how can we kind of reach a broader audience with our work, and then also just kind of continue to keep people engaged. And then, yeah, more specifically, just with electric vehicles, with the EV roadmap, we're also mapping out what that outreach will look like, but we kind of want to get a better sense, you know, of the residents in Bellevue, just, I think we, we know that we are kind of on, a little more on the leading edge side of things with adopting electric vehicles, but would love to just have a little more kind of data to back some of that up that's more specific to our community, so I think with that as well, we'll be doing some outreach to, and really wanting to also hear from a diversity of our residents, so not only the people who maybe can afford some of the higher-end vehicles, but really also some of our lower-income residents who might be interested but feel like it's completely out of reach and want to understand what, you know, some of their concerns might be or their interests are, especially some people, you know, who might have a really long commute from, for work and could benefit from having an electric vehicle and reducing some of their, their transportation, transportation costs.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say, I think the scale of outreach through something that can provide notifications or just has information available, and also a way that allows you to collect data on a, on a broader scale. I mean, even with the additional staff, I mean, it's still a big city, there's still a lot of people, and so just think, trying to think about ways that you could scale both getting information out and collecting information. I'll just use an example as a, in terms of modifying behavior, driving behavior, right? Google Maps now shows you like a route that you can take that is more environmentally conscious, right? Like, how would you do it? Like, it'd be tough to do that without having it at your fingertip in that moment, so just trying to think about ways you can scale it.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Stokes, you had one more comment?
Yeah, just real quick, real quick on the Wilburton, Wilburton. What are, are you putting, taking into account working with East Trail and the Grand Connection and that? And that, that certainly is an area that we can have a lot of opportunity in rebuilding that whole place and making it greater and putting all that in, and it's going to be, as we develop that area, it's going to be a challenge too in terms of how do we make that, you know, environmentally friendly as we do that? So, but that, that's kind of on your radar as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, especially as we work on some of the urban design components in terms of, you know, physically, how will Wilburton connect to the, the Grand Connection and, and to East Trail? That will be a big component, so we're, we're working closely with our strategic planning team who will probably be a little more in the lead on just some of those more specific elements. But yeah, I think we're, we're definitely tackling, tackling those two things as an integrated project.
Great, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. It was a good discussion, great presentation. Nice to meet all of you, welcome. Community has been waiting for you for a long time. And with that, that is the end of our meeting. Thank you very much.